Good evening. The June 24th meeting of the Evanston City Council will come to order. Would the Clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Revelle, here. Councilmember Reed?
Here.
Councilmember Herakaris?
Here.
Oh, he's here. Councilmember Kelly?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Present.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Here.
Councilmember Newsma? Is he here?
He's here.
Um, he's here. He'll be in the room in a minute. Um, Councilmember Burns?
Also here.
He'll be here in a minute. Uh, Councilmember Sufferton?
Here.
Mayor Bis?
Uh, here. We have a quorum present and are prepared to do our work for the evening. We begin with my public announcements and proclamations, uh, of which there are one or two, depending upon how you count. Uh, we begin with a proclamation declaring this Evanston Symphony Orchestra Month. Uh, that was, um, untimely applause. Uh, it's going to be very disappointing if I then do the proclamation and there's less applause afterwards. So, um, you've created a bar, um, to clear. Let's see if we can do it. Uh, whereas, the Evanston Symphony Orchestra was awarded Community Orchestra of the Year 2024 by the Illinois Council of Orchestras for the symphony's high standards of performance, its creative and adventurous programming, its outstanding volunteer musicians, and its extensive outreach to the Evanston and North Shore communities. And whereas, Margaret Gergen was awarded Board Chair of the Year for 2024 by the Illinois Council of Orchestras for her leadership that stabilized the ESO through the COVID-19 pandemic that shut down live performances and deprived people of the shared joy of live music, and relaunched live performances in a successful, full, first full season following the COVID-19 pandemic, and also for her skillful management of the disruption caused by the sudden and unexpected passing of the ESO's longtime general manager, David Ellis. And whereas, the Evanston Symphony Orchestra reached underserved members of our community through music, including preschoolers and their families in the school district 65's Head Start and early Head Start with a much-loved Music in Your World program that reduces the kindergarten readiness gap, and including middle school orchestra students in its free side-by-side concert, and including musical insights that bring performances to seniors unable to attend concerts. And whereas, the Evanston Symphony Orchestra brings an annual holiday concert, the largest on the North Shore of Chicago, that prominently features other diverse local music and dance groups, and a free outdoor summer concert on the lakefront. Now, therefore, I do hereby proclaim June 2024 as Evanston Symphony Orchestra Month in the city of Evanston, and encourage everyone to enjoy their and all musical performances in Evanston. And we have a number of people, as you recently heard, uh, including, uh, the conductor Lawrence Eckling and other representatives of the orchestra. And if I could ask you, while applauding more loudly than you did before the proclamation was read, uh, to come up front, uh, to receive the proclamation.
I just want to say thank you. Um, on behalf of the whole organization, we're extremely honored. But I also have to say that, as wonderful as the honor is, it's not, it's not as, the work we do itself is even more important and even more gratifying that we get to perform, rehearse, and share what we do with the community that we serve. So, thank you very much, and thank you for this.
Oh, well, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Mayor, uh, it's my pleasure to move approval of resolution 1 dash, whatever it is, uh, 1 dash R dash 24, uh, which is to approve an honorary street name designation for the wonderful Larry Sufferton. And we have a number, a couple of speakers here this evening.
Well, that wouldn't be in order unless someone seconded the motion.
Oh.
Second. Councilmember Revelle moves approval of resolution 1 dash R dash 24. Councilmember Nguyen, seconds. Uh, we have our Cook County, our current Cook County Commissioner, Josina Morita, as well as Michelle Jordan, who has worked with Larry for a number of capacities here. Uh, so, Michelle, would you be willing to come and make some comments to see if you could persuade the council on this one?
Good evening. I don't think I need to persuade too many people. I think, um, the love in this room for Commissioner Sufferton is amazing. Um, my name is Michelle Jordan, and I had the honor of working for over a decade for Commissioner Sufferton. Uh, I started as his, um, general counsel, and I have to say that, um, it was probably, uh, I'm an older woman now, this is probably the most fulfilling job I've ever had. His kindness, um, his passion for all the things that he believed in. He was a passionate conservationist and, and sometimes took a little bit of guff for that because he, he thought the forest preserves were there to be kept and not, um, to be taken apart and turned into a, a zip line or something like that. He, um, he was one of the hardest-working people I've ever known. One of the things that I got to do is write resolutions for people. And very often, uh, he would thank, uh, the spouse and the family for sharing that person with, um, the community. And I can't think of anyone who has shared more with our community. I had the honor of going to different council meetings, um, the hospital board and the, um, conservation council, and it was not unusual to have people come up and say, "You're so lucky to get to work with Commissioner Sufferton." He did such and such. And these were not necessarily people who lived in our district. He was known throughout the county. If you had a problem, you would call Cook County Commissioner Larry Sufferton, and then he would find a way to help. Um, I know that, from talking to Liz, that in particular, where this is going to be, Liz, his daughter, um, where this sign will be, it's going to be in a very special location. When my husband and I first moved, um, to Evanston, we were, would walk to the parade, and we walked by this house where there was a giant event going on, and he would hold court, and there would be all these people and all this excitement, and then later on, we would see him in the parade. Um, I think, uh, the first time I ever met Larry was, uh, on a very cold day. We were doing a lion for gun violence, and unlike a lot of other, you know, politicians who may say, "Oh yeah, that's a great idea," he was actually laying on the cold concrete next to me and my son, Graham. Um, he really thought it was important to show up, but then later, because he had perfect clarity of both the law and, very strangely, every single person's name. I don't think I ever, um, can recall somebody coming up and he was not able to summon something, either a common story or, or a shared memory that they had. It was, um, pretty staggering. Um, he has a very special love for Evanston, and, um, I know, uh, a lot of the staffers that I got to work with were from Evanston, and, um, we had this term for him, when someone would come from Evanston that had a problem, he would put on what we called the Father Suffertini cap. And, um, the Father Suffertini cap can only be described as a, as a cap that is complete compassion. He loved his community, and I can't think of a better person to have a street named after him than Larry Sufferton. So, thank you, and I'm, I think I'm speaking in favor. It's not official. Don't want to be presumptuous, but, um, it was a real joy of my life to get to work and know Larry Sufferton. Thank you for doing this.
Commissioner Morita, do you mind saying a few words as well, please?
Good evening, everybody. Uh, my name's Josina Morita, the honor being the new Larry Sufferton. Uh, there are way worse things to be known for, um, to represent the 13th district, uh, here at the Cook County Board. Um, it's fitting that, you know, Larry really got to be known at the Board as like the king of resolutions. Uh, so it was really nice to be able to do a resolution for him, uh, and, and to think about how do we honor him and his legacy and his work. Um, I had the fortune and misfortune in some ways of following him because I feel like when I'm still on the Cook County floor and somebody asks a question about law or history, they still look at thy seat, and then they realize it's not Larry, and they're like, "Oh, God, we have no idea." Um, he really was the living memory, um, you know, of so much of the history of Cook County. I always, we, we joke that Larry has probably forgotten more about Cook County history than many of us will ever learn. Um, and, you know, the, his legacy of establishing the municipal code in Cook County, the minimum wage, uh, his leadership as, uh, on veterans' issues as the last veteran to serve on the Cook County Board, um, and of course, the referendum for the forest preserve being a historic, uh, gift to all of us and to future generations. I always say it's our generation's burn-in plan of not only growing, uh, green space, but growing natural space. Um, and so, uh, it's a great way to thank and honor and remember all of the work that Larry has done. Michelle talked about, you know, Larry shared so much with us. I also want to recognize Gloria and Liz and Tom. As a mom of two kids, I also know how much you give, um, as the spouses and the family, um, in order for us to be able to do what we've been able to do. So, thank you to Larry, thank you to Gloria, thank you to Tom and Liz, um, and hopefully thank you to, uh, you all for approving this. Um, we look forward to doing the public ceremony and having a big party.
Um, well, I want to share also, um, some brief remarks from Congresswoman Jan Schakowsky when she heard that, uh, we were honoring Larry in this way. So I just have something, uh, rather brief to read. Um, "Having just heard that Evanston resident and dear friend Larry Suffertin is being considered for the honor of having a street named for him, I can think of no one more worthy of this great honor. For decades, decades, Larry has contributed to the well-being and advancement of the city of Evanston and beyond, including our state and our nation, and he has served in the military, and he's a proud veteran. For two decades, Larry Sufferton served as Commissioner, our Commissioner on the Cook County Board. He helped literally thousands and thousands of people to achieve their goals and to improve their lives and the life of our community." So Jan urges us, uh, City Council, to recognize the greatness of wonderful Larry Sufferton and name the street for him, which I certainly hope we are going to be able to do.
Uh, Councilmember Sufferton?
I think I have to say something. Um, I always thought there'll be a time for this at the big party, but I, I was talking to Dave Davis today, and we were, uh, remembering Karen Shavers, and I know, one of the things that you're most proud of is, uh, the people that you worked with and, um, the service that they provided to the people, uh, that you represented. So, um, you know, and this is an honor for you, but I know that you see this as a, uh, culmination of a lot of work from a lot of people, um, who spent, you spent 20 years, uh, working very hard on behalf of the people that you represented. Very often, people will come up to me and talk about times you helped them with their property taxes or whatever county things there were. I think realistically, if you took out the people who thought they were voting for you when they voted for me, I might not have won, huh, two elections, uh, but I, you know, I've always appreciated your example, and, um, it's a well-deserved honor.
Clerk Mendoza?
I want to say, um, how proud I am of you for all of the work that you do, and thank you, I just felt like acknowledging, thank you for all the support you've given me and the support that you've given a lot of young people, um, in my position. Um, I don't have, you know, the privilege of having a father who can give me all this advice as a newly-elected official, but I know that when I called you, uh, when I first came into this office, you picked up the phone and you explained, um, to me so many things, um, so many things that many of us or the people up here will learn from their parent, like, um, what is IMRF, right? Like, what are all these things? Um, and you spent, um, I think like about an hour on the phone with me, just telling me, um, everything I should know, and, um, I know that hearing from other people in the community, that's just an attitude that you've always had, um, with constituents and with people, um, especially young people, and I appreciate you for doing that throughout your career, but also continuing to do that. Um, and I hope everyone in the community is just as proud as I am when they drive by, by your honorary street. Congratulations. Very well deserved.
Um, I just wanted to add, you know, there's, there's so much to say about Larry's, um, achievements and his public service and the different moments of ways in which he's contributed so much to our community. I just want to say, like, there is, I don't know anybody, it's, it's like really crazy. Like, if you have an unsolvable problem, you just call Larry. That's the, that's the only thing that works, and it doesn't matter what the arena is, what category of problem, he will have an idea you didn't think of, he'll know a person you don't know, he'll know how to approach that person, probably he'll talk to them on your behalf because he's better at that sort of thing than you are, almost no matter who you are. And he just fixes things. He turns the temperature down, he explains things so they make sense, and he makes things better, no matter what the issue is. Um, and so, I don't know, Stephanie, I, I'm guessing only one person up here learned from their parent what most of us learned from you, Larry. I, I certainly didn't, um, whether it was about IMRF or anything else, but I, I just, um, I, I think on top of the, the gifts to the community on so many issues, the approach you bring to just, it's wild, just going through every day and making every little thing you encounter a little bit better for everybody around you, it is an extraordinary gift. It's an extraordinary gift to all of us, and I just personally, uh, want to say thank you very, very much. Seeing no further discussion, would the Clerk please take the role?
I'd be honored to. Um, Councilmember Revelle? Yes, indeed. Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries. The resolution is adopted, and the street will be named. And Larry, no pressure, but if you'd like to come up and make a comment or two, we are, we are here to listen.
Thank you. I don't want to distract you from the rest of your meeting, but every time I'm in this room, I feel like I should be talking about property taxes because this was the place where we did a lot of seminars on helping people. Uh, first of all, thank you, all of you, uh, for doing this. Gloria and I have had the privilege of living in this town for 47 years. Uh, we've raised both of our children, and fortunately for us, within a half-mile of our house, our six grandchildren live. So, uh, Evanston means a lot to us. Besides the 20 years of representing Evanston on the county board, I had 10 years where I was the outside legal counsel for the city of Evanston, and, um, we negotiated, given the role of negotiating with Edison, the franchise agreement that fixed their infrastructure and stopped the blackouts that we were having back in the 70s and 80s when we first got here. Uh, we were able to put a little, uh, one-line, uh, tax revenue, uh, language into the federal tax code, which allowed for the, the research park to be built. Congressman Yates and Congressman Rostinkowski, it was one of the funnier negotiations I was ever in because Rostinkowski wasn't sure what Evanston really was, and, and Yates wanted to get this done, and it was such a small piece, but it covered the, what we needed to build the research park. Uh, three viadocks we got built. I remember being with Councilmember Nguyen's father, watching one of them being built over on, uh, Dempster, uh, and he was an engineer and he understood all the things the CTA was doing. So it's been a real privilege to be able to interact in many ways with Evanston. I ask you to come by when we do this, uh, street naming because one of the reasons you want to be at our corner is that we have, I think, the oldest bir oak in Cook County. It's been estimated to be 450 years at least old, and it's right there at the corner. This sign will look at that tree, and that tree will outlive all of us. So, again, thank you very much, and thank you to the people of Evanston for letting this happen.
Uh, the next item on the agenda is the City Manager's public announcements.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, uh, members of the City Council, Clerk Mendoza. Um, I'm excited to ask Director Thompson to come up to the podium. Director Thompson is here with a brief update on our crisis alternative response Evanston program, and she's also going to introduce the members of our team.
Thank you so much. It is such an honor to be here right, um, after, um, Mr. Sufferton. I started working with Mr. Sufferton back in 2010, uh, for older adults, so it is really a privilege to be here right before, uh, him to announce, um, the care team. This has been a long time coming. So, uh, first again, I'm Audrey Thompson, Director of Parks Recreation, so City Manager Stowe, um, Clerk Mendoza, Mayor Bis, um, City Council. Um, I'd like to, um, talk a little bit about each one of the members so you all know who will represent, um, the city as a part of our care team. So first, there's Jordan Barnett, and Jordan is an Evanstonian. I know you, everyone loves to hear that. So, Jordan is an Evanstonian, born and raised. Um, he has a bachelor's in sociology as well as a master's of education, um, as far as, um, a learning behavior specialist, and he is a former Chicago Public School Special Education teacher, but also the founder of Black Sunrise, which is a mentoring program that meets at Robert Crown, and their focus is literacy of, of black boys. So I wanted to, um, introduce you all to Jordan Barnett. And then there's Lucas Goodman, and, uh, Lucas has a bachelor of, um, science and psychology, and he is the former direct support professional for a facility, uh, for individuals with developmental disabilities, and his responsibility was actually facilitating positive behavior change through conflict resolution and trauma-informed responsive care. And then there is Jorge Puma, and, um, Jorge is a bilingual criminal analyst. That was his former, um, position, and he has over three years of experience in law enforcement, but he was formerly employed with the largest humanitarian immigration law firm in the United States that served the Latino community. So, welcome Jorge. And then, um, and Jorge has a bachelor's of arts in criminal justice. And then finally, we have Rachel Stams, who is, uh, who has a bachelor of science in health sciences, a master's in healthcare administration, and is currently obtaining her master's in social work. Um, she is an internal transfer from our senior services division, and so she came to us in 2022 as our senior services coordinator, and has worked with us, um, to ensure that our older adults, um, she was an ombuds person, and then she worked to make sure that they had all the resources that they needed. So, welcome. And then finally, last but not least, um, another Evanstonian, Jaron Dorsey, returns to us as our deputy director for Parks and Recreation, and he will oversee all of our community services programs, and he will be dedicated to the care team to make sure that it is up and running. Again, he is an Evanstonian, born and raised. He has a master's of sports administration, uh, but also has a bachelor's, um, in behavioral administration and program management. So I think we've got a great team here. Orientation started last week, um, on the 17th, and our team has been really, really busy. They got, they had disability awareness training, crisis prevention training last week, documentation training, um, and then we have asked that all of our resources come together in in-person trainings to make sure that everyone pretty much understands the resources that, um, we will be, um, ensuring that everyone understands when we are, um, doing what we will consider all over the country at some point as our care team response. Um, and so we had Cindy Castro and Ally Hurnit, uh, from the Mental Health Task Force and Ascension, um, that's Cindy Castro, and then the Moran Center, um, we have our executive director, Patrick Kenan Devlin, and Kristin Kennard here. Um, so they were here last week doing training, and then they returned again today to do a more expanded mandated, uh, mandated reporter training for our staff. Uh, we also had Infant Welfare Society of Evanston, Steve Vick, to do training last week. And then this week, our team started with the Oakton Community College on their emergency crisis responder, uh, certificate. I remember, over a year ago, we were sitting in council library talking about Oakton and what they could provide, and so they are completing now a 28 certification, um, so that they can be certified crisis responders. So I really want to make sure that we thank many of our, our folks for, um, helping with this. There's Peer Services, there's Connections for the Homeless that will give an extensive training, the YWCA, the YMCA, YOU, our Skokie Police Department, um, 911, 311, our, um, police help desk. Um, our Evanston Fire Department will do all of the CPR first aid training for our crisis responders, and our Law Department will, which will sit, um, with our crisis responders to re, review ordinances to make sure that we are not violating anyone's rights. Um, also, our Health and Human Services for Victims Advocates, Emergency Assistance, General Assistance, Trilogy, Turning Point, the Police Department, who's been really, really supportive of this initiative, um, as well as Dayton, uh, Mediation Unit. Commander Safier, Jeremy McCray, and myself went to Dayton and spent three days, um, really going with the team to understand more about crisis response. And then, um, there's Interfaith Action, and then City Manager Stowe, you've been very supportive, I appreciate that. Mayor Bis, all the City Manager, all of the City Council members, thank you so much for your support of this initiative. And now, Jaron, did you want to have any words?
Good evening, Council. Um, just wanted to say I'm super excited to be back home. Uh, I spent much of my career in the Parks and Recreation Department and was super excited for this opportunity to come lead this important program, and I look forward to working with you all very closely as we continue to build out the program, and, uh, super excited about the team that we have. We've been spending a lot of time together, and we're excited to get out in the field, uh, soon. Thank you.
Councilmember Reed?
I just want to say, uh, a few thank yous, and one, just congratulations to all of you. Sorry, I don't have my glasses on, so it'll take me some time to be able to be familiar with your faces, but soon enough. Uh, but, uh, congratulations, really excited, uh, welcome back, uh, to the city. And I want to say thank you to, first of all, our Police Department for not being territorial around this and allowing this to move forward in a way that, um, I think will benefit the community, um, in a greater capacity, having it not in the Police Department. Uh, thank you to Director Thompson, um, for seeing this through, um, and getting us to this point where we're just about ready to launch. Thank you to Mayor Bis, I, you know, uh, part of why we're here is the Reimagining Public Safety Committee, uh, or not part of, the reason we are here is the Reimagining Public Safety Committee, and I want to say thank you to Councilmember Burns, who really, I think, pushed this through by, um, this came out of the committee that Councilmember Burns chaired, and, uh, Councilmember Burns worked with Lee and other folks to really get us here, and so I want to say, uh, thank you to him as well, um, and to everyone who, who made this happen. So, really excited, looking forward to seeing what the, the team does, and, um, I certainly will want to be meeting with you all as soon as you hit the ground because we got some stuff on, uh, in the eighth ward that we got to take care of, so, thank you.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
Councilmember Harris? Oh, sorry.
No, no.
I just wanted to say congratulations and welcome. There's a face that I remember as a youth, Jordan. Uh, make sure you're, he has a twin, so it's only one of them doing the work. So if you see somebody on the street, but watching you specifically grow, um, you came to Oakton when we did the college tour, you and your brother and my son, so it warms my heart, um, being an Evanstonian. When you're from here, you leave and you come back, and you're invested. Um, it means something, anywhere, but we're in Evanston, so I'm talking about Evanston, so thank you. Thank you, all of you. Yes, we have work on Howard, but we have work in Evanston, and you look like the team that will be able to do that. You have my full support, and, um, I look forward to the work that you'll be able to do, so thank you so much.
And I'll just add, welcome aboard. That was, uh- That was a heck of an impressive list of resumes that got read by Director Thompson. Mr. Dorsey, welcome back. I, I'm going to say this, I've been mayor for three years, hired a lot of great people during the course of that time, some people have left. Never has my phone blown up when someone left this organization like it did when you got that job in Lincolnwood. People were not sure how this organization was going to keep on running without you, and folks are so excited to have you back here. Add to the whole team, this is, this is just a really important initiative for our whole community, and we're so lucky to have such qualified people doing the work. And so thanks and welcome aboard, and I'm here to be supportive and helpful in any way that I can.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is communications from the city clerk.
I just had one Bob Harris in support of the purchase of 1801 to 1835 Brown.
The next item on the agenda is public comments. We have just under 15 people who've signed up this evening, so everyone will be given three minutes. We begin, as always, with those who sign up on this yellow sheet of paper to speak in person, beginning with James Johnson, who will be followed by Adriana Gomez, and then Alvaro Gomez.
Am I getting into mic? Is that part of my three minutes? Good evening. My name is James Johnson. I'm a resident of the Fourth Ward, also on the ADA Advisory Committee. I've also filed agreements a little over a year ago concerning the Evanston Dog Beach not being ADA accessible. As being on the committee, I go to the layfront and as I'm with my service animal, I'm speaking to seniors and those in wheelchairs concerning the situation of the Dog Beach and other situations for the city of Evanston concerning ADA accessibility. And from the last meeting that I attended, I spoke and listened, and it seems like everybody wants to pass the buck from the left hand to the right hand. I heard one member saying, I don't want to be offended by another commissioner, that we did something wrong. But as you're doing that, you're offending those that are disabled. Because the whole point of the Dog Beach is being accessible for those with disabilities, not worrying about offending somebody else. When you offend someone from the ADA Committee, it's really bad, because we already feel that we're third-class citizens in a lot of cases, because it's not accessible everywhere in Evanston, including in businesses. And once you get that ADA accessible in Evanston, you will generate revenue from other residents from different cities and nearby suburbs, Womac, Glencoe, Evanston, I mean, Chicago, they'll come here and utilize it, and you're, and you're, the expenses for the Dog Beach will increase, will help pay for that. And my whole point is this, when are you going to have a deadline of when all the commissions get together and come to a date concerning the situation? Because it seems like there's no date, it's just rationalization of being, the buck being passed to another buck, because everybody's afraid about being offended by another committee. This is about the ADA for those that are disabled, and it's a federal law, thus its aspect concerning that. So I leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Adriana Gomez, who will be followed by Alvaro Gomez, and then Matt Rooney.
Hello, Adriana Gomez, Fifth Ward, daughter of Alvaro Gomez, owner of Al Gomez Landscaping. The leaf blower ordinance is near and dear to my heart. For better or for worse, we were lucky enough to receive help from the Sustain Evanston Grant, but we are only one family, and this has created a lot of tension between our community of landscapers. Please allocate the additional funds for those companies that are trying to comply with the ordinance. This grant is what allowed my family to stay in Evanston. They deserve that help as well. The change in exemptions to all athletic fields and art official turf fields is highly appreciated, but I would suggest clarification on the square footage of such fields. Requiring registration of all landscaping companies to utilize leaf, that utilize leaf blowers, I fear is going to open another can of worms. So Spanish-speaking individuals, as of right now, can call the Community Development Permit Desk for assistance for this application, but they are using phone interpretation services. And personally, I do not recommend. I genuinely think that if it weren't for Stephanie Mendoza's cultural background and Cara Pratt's Spanish fluency, the number of people registered would not be what it is today. We should hire a bilingual person that can further assist the landscaping companies through the additional things that need to register, because that's where the companies that are not registered have the most trouble. I know that would feel more comfortable and willing to comply with someone who understands them and their background. Clients have complained about the increase in prices and the amount of time it takes to get the job done. My dad did lose a lot of work opportunities because of this. We kindly redirect them to the city's leaf blower ordinance. With that, I ask that the city report leaf blower violations to the property managers and only issue a notice to the landscaping company. Please keep pushing the education on the ordinance to Evanston property owners.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Alvaro Gomez, who will be followed by Matt Rooney, and then Katerina Topalov.
Hola, mi nombre es Alvaro Gomez. Voy a hablar en español porque es la única manera que puedo explicar bien lo que está pasando hasta ahorita.
Si pausa, puedo ayudarle a traducir.
Sí. Le decía que mi nombre es Alvaro Gomez, soy dueño de pequeño negocio, se llama Al Gomez Landscaping.
My name is Alvaro Gomez. I'm the owner of a small business, Alvaro Gomez, Alvaro Gomez Landscaping.
Este, pues únicamente voy a hablar de lo que está pasando hasta ahorita, verá cómo ha funcionado la, lo de las sopadoras.
I'm only going to talk about how things have been functioning right now, the leaf blower ordinance.
Porque hasta donde yo he visto, este, ahorita están funcionando bien. Voy a necesitar más tiempo para ver si en verdad van a aguantar lo del invierno que viene.
For now, the leaf blowers have been functioning well. I just have to give it some time to ensure that they function through, through the winter.
Y de lo que mi negocio ha bajado hasta ahorita, lo he descubierto porque nosotros tuvimos que aumentar los precios, y hay gente que no está registrada que cobra menos, y es, se van con ellos.
The reduction in my business has happened, has happened due to the increase in prices that we've had to give, and there's other people who will charge less for business.
Entonces yo hasta ahorita, yo perdí clientes y tuve muchos, ¿cómo se dice? Complaints, o algo así, ¿verdad?
For now, I've lost a lot of clients and I've had complaints.
De mis, los, los, las personas, pues los clientes que yo tengo, de ellos mismos recibí, este, así como preguntas de por qué este año me cobran más. Les expliqué que porque las sopadoras no soplaban suficiente para sacar rápido la hoja, entonces este, y pues tuvieron que pagarme lo que decía, porque yo les dije que esto era ordenanza de la ciudad, que todos sabían que no podíamos usar sopadoras.
Yeah, I'll try to remember as much of that as I can. He said, most of the complaints that he's had is because of his increases in prices, and he's had to explain to residents that the reason why his prices are increasing is because of the time, the lapse time that it's taking. It's taking more time to get leaves out of the property.
Y pues eso es lo que hay hasta ahorita, que pues yo, mi opinión es que les den oportunidad a los que quieran registrarse para que este, pues se acabe todo esto, porque si no se registran, esto va a ser, va a seguir igual.
He's asking, you know, wants people to get the opportunity that want to register as landscapers, because if they don't register, then this is never going to end.
Este, entonces vamos a, pues esperar que esto se solucione de aquí al invierno, si me entiendo.
And we hope that this is solved from here to the winter.
Ya para el invierno, pues yo creo que varios van a venir a cambiar a quejarse por lo mismo.
And he said, from here to the winter, you'll probably see more people coming to council to complain about the same stuff.
Sí. Y eso es todo, gracias.
And that's all, thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Matt Rooney, who will be followed by Katerina Topalov, and then Ray Friedman.
Good evening. I'm Matt Rooney. I'm the resident of the Seventh Ward, and I'm your third speaker in a row on the leaf blower ordinance. I'm here as the president of the Canal Shores Golf Association, and I know in the past meetings about this, there's been discussions of removing the exemption that golf courses get, and I'm just here to urge you not to reconsider that tonight, and add that, take away that exemption. Quite frankly, we absolutely need that exemption to successfully operate the golf course. We need to use a gas turbine-type blower, which is actually a four-cycle blower instead of a two-cycle blower, so it's less polluting than the backpack blowers, in terms of how they operate. And the reason we need to use that is we have very sensitive equipment on the golf course. For three-quarters of the areas, we have to cut. We cut the grass very short. We use reel-type lawn mowers that go very close to the ground, unlike a rotary mower, and these blades are very sensitive. We actually cut the grass and the greens down to five 30 seconds of an inch, which is thinner, less than this pencil. And so you can imagine that our equipment could be really very damaged if any kind of twigs, stones, and things were left on the course. So we need to have a very powerful blower in order to be able to remove those materials. And this, these are not backpack-type blowers. This is a big blower that's pulled by a piece of equipment. The tech, the technology does not exist now to make a strong enough blow, the kind of blower that we need to use on the golf course, and we've committed repeatedly, and I'll commit again here, that when it does exist, we'll switch over when it becomes economically viable. No other community on the North Shore, North Chicago, has, in Chicago and the North Shore has outlawed, has banned, excuse me, these leaf blowers, and so I urge you not to do that. Sometimes it's good to be out in front of other communities, this is not one of those times. If you do that to us, you'll be putting us at a competitive disadvantage in terms of the quality of our golf course compared to the other surrounding golf courses. And as you probably all know, we've just put $5.9 million into the area to improve the golf course, and we really want to keep it in good shape. The one question I've gotten asked about this is, well, how do golf courses operate with, you know, before this? There weren't leaf blowers, these leaf blowers only came in in the late 70s. The answer to that is this is a different kind of a piece of equipment, as I've said. These leaf blowers were first patented in 1945, and they've been used on golf courses ever since. And I think we can all admit that the way that golf was played, and what the courses looked like, and how the grounds were taken care of before the Second World War is a lot different than it is now. So I urge you, please, to do not reconsider the idea of taking away our exemption. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Katerina Topalov, who will be followed by Ray Friedman, and then Matt Dienerstein.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Katerina Topalov, and I am a member of the Environment Board, and also the chair of the CARP Implementation Task Force. I am here to comment on the preliminary findings that the Envision Evanston is going to present to you tonight. So, and I would also like to urge for our new comprehensive plan to ensure that our community is ready for the climate changes that are already unfolding. I would like to start off with just a couple of examples. Due to the increased storm intensity, Great Lakes communities are already seeing lakeside erosion, and in some cases, the entire roads are being stripped into the water. A comprehensive plan that predicts and prepares for these instances can prevent that. Second example, in 2003, France was faced with a heat wave that was the strongest and the longest for a long time. In the fortnight, they lost 15,000 people. They got to, they set on working on preparedness plan, and when the next even hotter heat wave happened, their death toll was cut by 90% just by being ready, having the infrastructure ready, and having the community ready. The report of current conditions focuses on goals like more green spaces and more native plants, and while these goals are very worthwhile, they're not the only ones, and they're not the most important ones. The report, I'm sorry, a truly comprehensive plan that looks into the future will include an environmental lens in each focus area of the comprehensive plan. Instead of having the environment listed as just one subsection, just an afterthought, zoning, housing, traffic management are all of these areas that will be affected by the oncoming climate changes. What is important is that we are prepared for the changes that we know are coming due to the climate change. We need to plan for the precipitation and high heat events. We need to plan for increased electrification, as we will all most likely switch over to electric cars in the next 10 years, 20 years, and more electric appliances. Are we planning to make sure that our stormwater systems, electrical distribution networks, and emergency preparedness are ready for this? So I'm asking the City Council and the Envision Evanston team to ensure that our city infrastructure is ready for this climate change, so that we prevent additional climate-induced costs that would otherwise affect our city, our businesses, and our residents, and to ensure that the additional burden brought on by climate change does not disproportionately affect the most vulnerable parts of our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ray Friedman, who will be followed by Matt Dienerstein.
After speaking at these public comment sessions for about six years now, we seem to have the same or similar issues, but now it just costs us a whole lot more money, increased by about $50 million per year for the last three years. You know, six years ago, when I sat through the goals, the six goals that were proposed and settled on in 2018, the one goal that I believe is most concerning to me anyhow is to stabilize city finances. And then the city increased the budget by about $50 million each year for the last three years, and received $43 million from ARPA funds. We are supposed to set up, we were supposed to set up at that time, when you created those six goals, you're talking about data to measure the success or failure of each of those six goals, as requested by an alderman. Can you, can we please review the data for each of those goals set in 2018, and we can decide, you can decide, let residents know how is this success or failure of those six goals, because I know you've come up with new ones now. I don't understand how paying hundreds of thousands of tax dollars on studies and consultants are achieving our goals, especially when the residents are not involved in the discussion and the processes. This needs to change. Please don't spend our money without asking us first. We spent $7 million on Fountain Square, that doesn't work, and now we're receiving $800,000 as a settlement. Will that fix the problem, or will we have to spend another $7 million to rebuild Fountain Square? And whose job was it to inspect Fountain Square as it was being built? Who's responsible for that? James Park lawsuit went on for eight years. James Park lawsuit went on for eight years, and we spent eight million dollars. Robert Crown, fifty million dollars with cracked floors and more repairs needed. What's the cost to taxpayers monthly to keep Robert Crown open? Harley Clark is sitting empty, which would be making the city money. And then you close up three buildings on Wesley, total of twenty-four units of affordable housing, uh that the city has ignored for the past two to four years. Who's responsible for that? And now without any input or discussion with residents, you decide to move out of City Hall and spend 2.5 million per year on 909 Davis, up to fifteen years.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Oh, it says I have ten seconds left.
Negative ten. Uh, this, this concludes the list of people who signed, oh no, sorry, Matt Dienerstein is, is the next speaker, I apologize.
Hi, my name's Matt Dienerstein, uh, and I'm on the ADA Committee, and I wanted to both, I'm a dog owner, and I use the dog beach quite a bit, and uh wanted to say one of the problems, one had been fixed. Last year, I got locked in the dog beach because of my lack of sight. I was unable to push the buttons to get out. Now that's been changed, and I could just push the door and get out. But at the same time, getting in, I usually have to wait for somebody if there's not a guard there, the guards are all terrific and they help me in. Or if somebody else is coming, I ask them, uh, hey, can you let me in? And uh they always happy to oblige. I think the dog beach is fantastic, I, I, much better than that little postage stamp-sized one we had prior to from erosion. And uh as far as ADA accessibility to the beach, uh in addition to being able to punch, that could easily be done with a, a card like they have, uh, like we have at the senior center, um for the health, for the health facility. It's a card that you show uh to a, a bar reader, and it lets you in. Something like that would be very useful. And uh as far as ADA accessibility to the beach, I think that's something we need to look at for those who are not able to, uh, who are not able to be ambulatory. One other thing I wanted to say along the lakefront, um, I love the lakefront, but the bike path, I think this has been passed, but I'm not certain, uh, that the yellow lines are pretty worn out. I have about twenty percent sight, and uh I am constantly losing, I'm constantly going over the yellow line, and I risk crashing into, you know, causing a bike accident or running into a runner if I could see that yellow line, if others could see it, I know it's happened with some little kids also. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So that's the, under the list of people who signed up on the yellow sheet. We now move to those who signed up online to speak in person, uh, Murphy Monroe.
Hello, my name is Murphy Monroe, I live and work in Evanston, I own a small business in Skokie, and I'm proud to serve as a Commissioner on the city's Commission for Aging and Disabilities. I was really disappointed a month back when the council chose to punt on necessary ADA repairs that had to take place inside of the noise building. We punted in the names of the HVAC part of it being too expensive, but completely ignored the about million dollars worth of ADA repairs that our one and only arts building actually needs. Then I watched everybody continue tonight to punt on making our dog beach ADA accessible. How can it be that in 2024, in progressive Evanston, we are still creating public amenities that are not accessible to the disabled community? The status quo in many Evanston buildings, and especially our schools, is to segregate disabled children and adults out of those spaces. There is no other protected minority class that this council could get away with planning public facilities without including them. The disabled community is disproportionately low-income compared to every other minority-class community. Their need to access public facilities is greater than others. And we continue to put up a dog beach and then have to think two years later about whether or not we made it accessible in the first place. We all agree that the lakefront is our most valuable shared asset. It's way past time that we actually shared it with all of our neighbors. I understand that this type of thing is expensive and may be complicated, but if Evanston can't afford an accessible dog beach, then Evanston can't afford a dog beach.
Thank you very much. That concludes the in-person portion of public comment. We now move to the online speakers, beginning with Ms. Betty Esther, followed by Bob Paris.
Good evening. Yes, my, my son. Um, one, I would like to offer my congratulations to Commissioner and Secretary, but to have a street with his name on it, uh, it's too bad it won't be permanent like the old tree, but congratulations. Tonight I'm speaking on the plan, the cons, action plan, the twenty-four action plan. I read it, looked at it, and was going, I only had two things to talk about. Then something happened on June the thirteenth, which kind of bothered me. That committee did not seem to know anything about the affordable housing units that had been lost, or why they was lost, if there was going to be anything done by the city to replace those twenty-four units. That was kind of odd. And it also became aware that, uh, I don't think none of them had been through a training, because back in nineteen ninety, maybe HUD doesn't require committee people to take this training, they did then. The committee is too short. Two of the most important people that need to be on this committee and who the committee was designed for, that is local income resident that lives in the CBDG area. They are missing those two individuals, they need to be replaced. One thing about the public, um, the consolidated plan, and what I think falls short, it's not in there an explanation as to why we lost the ESG funds. It just says we won't have access to them this year, but it didn't say why we lost those funds. We as a community and as a nation need to know why Evanston lost such a valuable resource.
Fifteen seconds.
The other one was, um, you talked about having, what you're going to do with affordable housing. This plan will start working on in 2020, during the same time that the city became aware of the condition of Wesley building.
Thank you very much.
But no discussion of...
Thank you very much. The last speaker signed up for public comment via Zoom is Bob Paris, I believe, um, Mr., oh, oh, I'm sorry.
I thought I was gonna be later, so.
My bad, uh, go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Bob Paris, and I'm an Evanston resident and a property manager and a real estate broker. I am here to speak about the eighteen thirty-one, eighteen thirty-five Brown acquisition, where the city would acquire this property and then have some say to make it affordable housing in perpetuity. I have reviewed the appraisal comments driven by the property, and I'm aligned with the concept of the city of Evanston acquiring property and being able to collaborate with developers to create affordable housing in perpetuity. I'm a member of the Heritage Stay Committee, and I agree with our mission to support affordable housing in a way that allows the city of Evanston to leverage its resources and its mandate in this manner. More specifically, I support this resolution that will allow the city of Evanston to negotiate an acceptable price for this land and the house, and for the intended stated purpose. Furthermore, I support additional efforts to engage the entire community and the immediate neighbors of the Jackson, Wesley, and Emerson land owned by the city for the purpose of finding a swift and meaningful effort to develop that parcel. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes public comment for the evening. Uh, we now come to special orders of business. Is anyone, would anyone care to make a motion relative to item SP one?
I'll move item SP one, um, Resolution thirty-nine R twenty-four, adopting a new city flag. I'll second.
Councilmember Reed moves passage of Resolution thirty-nine dash R dash twenty-four. Councilmember Hadda, Hadda carries seconds. Councilmember Reed.
Thank you. Just one point of order information, the packet didn't seem to have the resolution. Am I... It had the memo, but not the resolution itself. I suppose the flag is described in the resolution.
Uh, Ms. Ruggie, do you want to speak to this?
I'll, I'll just get to it. My point being is, uh, uh, beautiful flag, I actually, I think I got to see a preview of the flag, um, before it was officially announced in the mayor's office at one point. He was like, look at this beautiful flag that a young woman in our community drew, a girl, oh, a girl in our community drew. And um, one thing that I, I think is a bit different about the flag, the image that I saw that was drawn is the green was a little bit lighter in that image, and I would just love to see that green become a little bit lighter in, in color. And I don't have the, I forget the, you know, there's like the color codes that, so I don't have the exact shade of green in mind, but you know, a few shades lighter would be great.
So uh, I am consumed by an internal conflict at this moment, uh, which I will explain. On the one hand, the exact thing that I really hoped we were gonna avoid doing is designing a flag by committee and public, um, so I sort of don't want to engage in this conversation, but I, you're not the only one who had that view, and quite frankly, I think the first print run, um, had that very problem. And so the reason, uh, Councilmember Burns actually was asking earlier tonight, do we have the flag? Uh, the order's been placed, but it took a while to kind of, I would say, perfect the, uh, the green color, uh, so that it shows as forest green rather than sort of a grayish. So point, point taken, and that has, has been addressed.
Is staff able to send over the resolution? I suppose Allison is working on that now. All right, well, um, again, what, the only thing I'm looking for is for it to look more like the image that I saw that was hand-drawn and beautiful, um, uh, and that's it. And so if we're, if we're there, then I'm happy.
Councilmember Kelly, followed by Hadda carries.
Thank you. This is very exciting. Can, is there a cost associated with this, with implementing and, I'm just, I, I just didn't see any mention of it, but I know sometimes when you have to change a lot, I don't know if there's many of these that we change over, or what this implies.
Good evening, Councilmember. I assume you mean replacing existing flags with a new flag. I, I think there will be, um, depending on how many flags we end up ordering, you know, maybe in the neighborhood of a couple thousand dollars.
Thank you. It's not like the logo, so I figured it wouldn't be, there's not that many changes.
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hadda carries.
So I, I see that Bernie's here, so I'm gonna wave and say, um, I just want to share that the excitement I've heard from my friends and neighbors has been like overwhelming, like, one of the first things I got texted the day after the meeting was, when can we buy flags? And I think it is imperative that we print as many of these flags, because people are really excited about this, and I just, um, wanted to share that with you, because I think that's awesome.
At this time, no one's asking to speak for a first time, so we go back to Councilmember Reed with three and a half minutes left.
Thank you. I just want to note one thing with, thank you, Allison, for sending it now that I have it. I do think we're missing something from the resolution. I think the resolution should definitively describe the flag, or, or more accurately describe the flag. I mean, it says, you know, prominent green background, but I think literally the shade of green, in the same way that we, it by ordinance or resolution, describe ward boundaries. We say through the alley north of, you know, Ridge, whatever it is, I think the flag should be, it's our, it's our flag, and um, I think the proper way to implement a flag by resolution or ordinance would be to more accurately describe it.
At this time, again, no one is asking to speak for the first time, so we go back to Councilmember Kelly with, uh, four minutes and forty-five seconds left.
I think we could have a graphic on a resolution to actually have the flag.
Or incorporate it herein, yeah, that way.
Seeing no further discussion with the clerk, please, oh, uh, at this time, no one's asking to speak for a first or second time, so we go back to Councilmember Reed with two minutes and forty-five seconds left.
Yeah, I, I move to incorporate an image of the flag into the resolution. If there is an image of the flag that is available, that can be incorporated in.
I'll second.
Councilmember Reed moves that the image of the flag that was, uh, sent to printers for the, uh, print run to replace the existing city flags as previously defined by, described by, uh, City Manager Stowe, be incorporated in the resolution. Councilmember Kelly seconds. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none with the clerk, please take the roll on the amendment to incorporate the picture on the resolution.
As exhibit A.
As exhibit A. Maybe exhibit B for Bernie.
You'll have to add an exhibit A, whatever you want it to be, and then I can make it exhibit B. Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda carries?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nuisma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden.
Nine voting in favor and zero voting against the motion carries. The flag's not been adopted yet, Bernie, we've just changed the resolution. Before, uh, asking for a roll call, I'll just say that we talk a lot about how to optimize civics education in this country. Bernie now has learned that when city council meetings say five-thirty, the first item of the agenda happens at seven-thirty-seven. Thank you for your patience, it's a little bit amazing, Bernie. And we appreciate your work and your being here to make sure this all goes correctly tonight. With that, would the clerk please take the roll on the amended R thirty-nine dash R dash twenty-four to adopt a new city flag?
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda carries?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nuisma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden.
Aye.
Nine voting in favor and none voting against the motion carries. Resolution thirty-nine dash R dash twenty-four as amended is adopted, and now we have a city flag. And it won't be too long before it's right there. Is there a motion relative to item SP two?
I'll move item SP two, Invision Evanston twenty forty-five update. Second.
Councilmember Reed moves that we have a discussion on the envision Evanston 2045 update. Councilmember Nguyen's second. Ms. Jones.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Bis, councilmembers, Clerk Mendoza. I'm Megan Jones. I'm a Neighborhood Land Use Planner in Community Development. As mentioned, I am here to provide an update on envisioned Evanston, specifically give you some more information about the Phase One public engagement, the draft goal that, the draft vision, rather, that has been drafted, touch on the preliminary goals that have been created, and provide you with next steps that will be occurring. So we have finished the first phase, which is gathering the community's lived experiences. So this was information that we gathered through community and ward meetings, an online survey, which, actually, I will pause and also thank the Evanston Cradle to Career, which we partnered with to increase the number of community members we were able to reach. I believe the number they increased, the survey participation was about 35%. So it definitely helped to make an impact into the amount of community members that we were able to reach. We also held organizational meetings, meeting in a box, project website, which, as you can see, has received 5,690 website visits to this point, had office hours with staff, and we also held a visioning workshop last month with members of the community. All total, we had 2,874 participants in this part of the process, which is about, it's a little over 3% of the population, which, actually, if you look at the American Planning Association, you typically get about 1% to 2% participation. So we are a little bit above that threshold. And as we finish the public engagement phase, we absolutely recognize that there are some themes that bubble to the surface more often than not, and these included affordable housing, transportation infrastructure, preservation of community character, place making, including arts, culture, and vibrant public spaces, public safety, infrastructure maintenance, economic developments, environmental sustainability, and community engagement and representation. Drilling down a little bit more and getting some details on what we heard with regards to those themes, we absolutely heard things related to, as I said, housing, economic development, and public safety, but some of the more specific comments that we heard included, "Public transportation in Evanston is flawed in every way imaginable." I am deeply concerned about the lack of affordable housing for young families that are looking to put roots and buy a house here. Grade-level parking lots should be replaced because of the terrible land use that they are, and also urban design should be at the top priority of the city. It is the, part of the urban policy that everything should fall under, and this actually is kind of a nod to our efforts to create an urban design commission as well. We also heard some more things about what community members had a bigger desire for, and of course, speaking to some things that are probably not a surprise relating to affordable housing, variety of housing, community support, economic growth, and things of that nature, had absolutely some more specific comments relating to wanting to see more native plants in our parks, speaking to more sustainable nature of Evanston, making a commitment to economic diversity in our community, needing to address the need to update and modernize our physical infrastructure. And then one person who, a little bit more reminiscing and wanting to get back to what he remembers, specifically when he was younger, going downtown and having a lot more shops that him and his friends were able to go through and explore with his friends, and really speaking to wanting to get back to that. Again, a few more comments that we saw, speaking to availability of affordable housing, but also in this instance of commercial space, a lot of it has gotten a lot more expensive than people are able to afford, and this speaks to the, a point that it's not necessarily just for housing, it can creep into commercial space as well. Once we got the responses to some of the more pointed questions, we asked people to envision what they wanted to see Evanston be in 2045, specifically providing three words that would describe Evanston in 2045, and these are some of the words that they came up with, including affordable, safe, equitable, diverse, thriving, and sustainable. So going back to the visioning workshop, that particular workshop that we held in May included a variety of community members from a number of different professions, walks of life, ages. We had them come in on a Saturday and go through a number of different exercises, and at the end of those exercises, we came up with a number of themes, and we put those themes together and came up with a draft vision statement. So through some additional wordsmithing and suggestions from those participants in that session, we came up with this preliminary vision for Evanston in 2045, specifically, "In 2045, Evanston is a vibrant, resilient, and welcoming community for all. Evanston celebrates its diversity through our arts, culture, history, and neighborhoods. Steady growth in our local circular economy cultivates opportunities close to home while achieving ambitious climate action. Our abundant access to parks and open spaces promotes well-being, and extensive housing options make living in Evanston safe and attainable. Evanston's neighborhoods are connected through a robust network of transit, bike, and pedestrian options. We achieve this vision through proactive planning, community collaboration, and bold So as we are starting to get into the second phase, we took the public engagement themes, both the ones that I listed previously and the themes that we were seeing at the vision workshop, the vision statement that we created for Evanston in 2045, and have created these preliminary goal statements, specifically create a healthy community, establish strong local economy, protect natural resources, celebrate art and culture, increase housing diversity, and create equitable opportunities for all. So I'm not going to read everything. I'll just briefly touch on these, but if there are any that you want me to go back to, I'm more than happy to. So we speak to the goal of fostering a healthy community. We want to strive to build a vibrant, inclusive community that supports the holistic health of all of its residents. For the goal of establishing a strong local economy, we aspire to build a prosperous, inclusive community where economic vitality and quality of life are interwoven and benefit We speak to protecting natural resources. We strive to actively preserve our natural environment for the benefit of current and future generations. We speak to the goal of celebrating arts and culture. We aim to honor our history, celebrate our diversity, and foster a thriving cultural landscape for all. In speaking to increasing housing diversity, we strive to build resilient and inclusive neighborhoods where people of all ages, incomes, and family structures can find suitable and attainable housing. And finally, when we speak to the goal of creating equitable opportunities for all, we strive to build an equitable, inclusive, and sustainable community where every resident has the opportunity to thrive and enjoy a high quality of life and well-being. And we think of doing this through inclusive land use, enhanced transportation, job creation, and economic opportunities, housing diversity and attainability, a vibrant arts and culture, environmental sustainability, and culture of active, of active community participation, excuse me. So our next steps, as we are getting into Phase Two, with the goals that I just went through, we do want to get some preliminary feedback from the councilmembers this evening. We do intend to use those goals and themes to do more drilled-down discussions in the second phase and have more targeted discussions that speak to each of those items. And specifically in this phase, we do intend to do a series of pop-up events. We will have more online surveys to help to validate the community engagement that we've heard so far, as well as the goals and recommendations that will be drafted in the coming months. As I mentioned, we'll be doing the deep dive discussions that correlate with those themes and goals. We will continue to have our organizational perspective meetings, and then we'll have a boards and commissions workshop. So that is the end of my presentation. Happy to respond to any questions.
Councilmember Reed.
Thank you. I just want to highlight feedback that I've gotten, that was stated here in public comment and that I've gotten from folks in my ward about really wanting to make sure that environmental equity is a core part of this and evident throughout the process. Can you zone in on that a little bit more?
Sure. So it actually is the plan to incorporate sustainability and some of the goals of CARP throughout the plan. And as was stated during public comment, sustainability touches on pretty much every aspect of our land use, so it is the intention to have that kind of woven through. There may be a specific session or section that gets a little bit more deep into that conversation, but the intention is to have it woven throughout the plan.
How do we make that more apparent to, how do we, one, make sure that that is, that it's truly woven throughout the plan, but how do we also make that more apparent to folks who are participating?
I think that is something that we can probably discuss further in our deep dives, but also something that we could probably put on the website and really just make it clear that this is something that does touch on various aspects of land use. So it will be something that we intend to incorporate. So it's, it really is a little bit more of the public engagement aspect, probably, in making sure that we're hearing what people are saying and ensuring that that is something that they are seeing come about. I mean, really, we won't have draft documents in the very near future, but continuing those discussions will ensure that it's something that is sticking with both staff and the consultant as we're moving forward and we're starting to draft the documents.
Thank you. Councilmember Nguyen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to underscore that, that point as well. Let's make sure our climate action goals are woven throughout this. To the point about community participation in this process, one of the pop-up meetings, the meetings in a box, rather, was, I co-convened with Kara Pratt, who's our Sustainability Manager, specifically inviting members of the environmental and sustainability community to that meeting. So I suspect that a number of the words, the sustainability words that popped up in the word count were a function of that meeting, and so I think, you know, we should continue directed outreach through those channels. Speaking of word count, one of the things I shared as an observation at that meeting was a word count I ran on our current comprehensive plan, at 24, if 24 years old can be considered current. The word "climate" appeared in that plan three times. I think once was "economic climate," and once was quoting a resident who wanted to move to Florida because it was too cold. The word "carbon," zero mentions. The word "greenhouse," zero mentions. Sustainability was mentioned once. We didn't miss the boat completely, though, because bicycles, in terms of bicycle infrastructure, had 41 mentions, and pedestrian, or pedestrians was mentioned 39 times. So we're not coming from, you know, zero, but we do have a lot of potential upside here. I did a similar word count on a freshly minted plan from South Burlington, Vermont, where they have a really robust environmental presence. The word "climate" in their plan was mentioned 99 times, maybe once or twice because of the snow, but a lot because of climate change. Carbon was mentioned 12 times, greenhouse 13 times, sustainability mentioned four times. You get the point. Yeah, we need to make sure these environmental concerns are baked into this, on every single page where it conceivably could make sense. Next, I have a question about process and timeline. Are we still on our original timeline to wrap this up by the end of the year? And when, at this point, when do you expect that the final draft will be available to come to council?
So we are still on target to have this in front of council, more so at the start of 2025. So the intention is to have drafts of the comprehensive plan and the zoning code probably early fall-ish, but that'll also include some public engagement for that, getting comments from the public, and then starting the process of taking it to land use commission and the other boards and commissions that have regulatory requirements for a review.
Thank you. I just want to, first of all, thank the team for the tremendous amount of work that's gone into this. I think there's a lot of really good stuff here, a lot of really promising stuff. I would, I totally agree with everything that my two colleagues said, but I would also say that I view this in an extremely outcomes-driven way, that we do have a responsibility to communicate effectively about what we're thinking along the way. That is good government, also will help us get better input. And yet, the most important thing is what we, what we come up with and what we vote through up here, and I think it's staff's responsibility and equally council's responsibility to impose a lot of accountability on ourselves to make sure that the final product meets our standards of sustainability being woven into every aspect of it and of boldness. Because I've said this privately, Megan, you've been, you're bored of me saying this, but I'll now say publicly into a microphone. If, at the end of all this, we've had a great process and a ton of input, and we've all educated ourselves, and then we kind of have like small-ball, half-measure outcomes, that, to me, is an unmitigated failure. And so I've, I plan to hold myself accountable to make sure we really go big here and, and that we wind up with a product that's worthy of the seriousness and depth and intensity of the process. So thank you very much. Is there a motion relative to item SP3?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move item SP3, approval of up to $400,000 from the Affordable Housing Fund for the city manager to negotiate the purchase of 1831-1835 Brown Avenue to be developed as affordable ownership housing and authorize issuance of a request for proposals to conduct community engagement at city-owned sites envisioned for affordable housing.
Councilmember Nguyen moves approval of up to $400,000 from the Affordable Housing Fund and everything else that was just read. Councilmember Burns, seconds. Councilmember Burns.
First off, I just want to introduce the Here to Stay Committee. It was mentioned earlier, or I saw Allison getting up for a second. I didn't know somebody wanted to start. So I heard Here to Stay, we, somebody previously mentioned Here to Stay Committee. Here to Stay Committee is a committee that I developed early on in the term. I look back at my, at my calendar. We've been meeting every month consistently since December of 2022 at least. This is a committee that I wanted to make an official committee of the city and then talking to staff and specifically Sarah Flax, who's our Community Development Director. If you recall, early on in the term, we were trying to reduce the amount of committees that we had, and so she asked if we could, you know, make it a community committee that she would be happy to participate and support the committee, which she has since the beginning. And, and so I'm going to invite some of the members to come up and just quickly introduce themselves and, and their expertise and where they live in the city. So I'll start with Michael Dykes, who may be a familiar name, should be a familiar name and face to everyone here. name and face to everyone here.
Hi, my name is Michael Dykes, and I am part of the Here to Stay Committee, also part of the Five Fifths Advisory Committee. I'm a local contractor and a landlord. I've been right down the street for 32 years, so I'm here. But recently, I did have an opportunity to meet with Councilman Burns and Rob Anthony from CEPO over at the brown, proposed Brown Street property. And I have a, I am an organic affordable housing landlord. Been that way. There's, I think, we, as we talked about what the proposal is, I think it's a, finally, the first time I've seen, and what we call affordable housing that leads to a home ownership project, and I think that that is a, I think it's a very viable thing to really, really look into. I think that is, affordable housing doesn't really exist if it's just continuation of rent, 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 rent down the road, somewhere along the line. There has to be some goal of homeownership, and I think this is the first one that I've actually seen that really shows some of that, and I think it's going to be a fantastic opportunity. I think that, I can't really speak for CEPO, but I think that they are intrigued by the challenge of it themselves and not just the, it's not just like a financial reward for them, it seems like they really want to get into it and want to try to tackle some of that. I think that'd be a good partnership.
Perfect, thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Dan Featherson. Been a real estate agent since 2008. Own my own real estate company, Featherson Realty. I also have, have experienced owning property in the south suburbs where I deal with a lot of low-income people and help them, you know, find homes and stuff like that. But I think that this committee that we're starting or have started is going to help a lot of people. I like the progress that we're, have shown so far in it. I've worked with Sarah before, and she's there, and nothing was ever, ever to ever come out of it. This is the first time I've seen with Mr. Alderman Burns that something positive is really coming and the wheels are really turning and some progress has been seen. So I'm very proud that that is happening. I'm glad to see it in the city, so diverse. I hope we can keep it as diverse as it always has been. Like I said, I've been born, I'm born and raised in Evanston. I've been living in Evanston all most of my life, and, you know, I was able to right a wrong. When my parents lost their home, I was able to buy back the same home, and my kids were able to grow up and go to Evanston Township. My daughter's now going to the University of Illinois. So it's a great thing about Evanston is that, how diverse it is and how much it helps people and how many resources that we have for the community. So I hope that we use this, these resources to help other people to come into the community or stay in the community and build on the progress that we're, we have been building with this committee. Thanks.
All right, then we have, also have Charlotte Hilton here with us.
Good evening, everyone. I am Charlotte Hilton. I'm a listing agent for the property, but I'm also a resident here for 54 years. I've been doing real estate in this town for 48 of those 54 years, so I'm very familiar with Evanston, diversity, and everything else that goes along with it. I have sold a lot of clients who were Evanston residents, properties in Lake County, because they were no longer able to afford to live in Evanston. We owe it not only to my clients, but we owe it to ourselves. We are better than that. So with all of us working together collectively, we can do this. The land is available, the seller's available, and all are available. So let's take advantage of what we have here and save our community. Let's keep diversity going because it's great. And I have clients calling from East Coast, West Coast, all because of the diversity that we have here in Evanston. So that's positive. So let's keep it going. And I'm a Realtor, and I can speak on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Donna Mobley. I am a fifth-generation Evanstonian. I'm also a business consultant, and I am a strong, strong, strong advocate of affordable housing. I am a Fifth Ward resident, and anyone who would be against this project is against families, against families who need a place that they could afford to live in, and please, please support this project.
Thank you. Tom Dennis.
Hi, thank you. I'm Tom Dennis. I've been a Fifth Ward resident for 21 years, so not quite as long as many of my other members here, but I've had, in that short time, the privilege of getting to know many of my neighbors, and I've seen different generations, families that have to leave that neighborhood specifically and the Fifth Ward because they can't afford to stay here. I had the privilege to visit the site. It's an amazing project. I think it's great to get some ownership and some rental opportunities, so I look forward to seeing this pass through and hopefully get some more housing that's affordable for our, our friends and neighbors.
And Tom, would you mind just talking briefly about your background?
Yeah, so I'm a residential construction company that does a lot of residential building. I did several years in Chicago doing affordable housing before I moved up here, so I just have a great interest in supporting this and keeping it going forward.
Thank you.
Hi, councilmembers, how are you? John Cleary, I used to live in the Fifth Ward. I moved a block or two outside of it. Now live at Wesley and Noize. Self, my family have three children, we all go to schools in Evanston. I have two kids next year in the CHS. I support this project. We've been working with, our committee has been working with Bobby Burns to go around the neighborhood, and we, I basically driven most of the streets around the Fifth Ward and the Second, Third Ward to find sites and locations for different buildings, and this was one of the sites that Alderman Burns came, came up with through his work with the different religious affiliations around the group, and it's a great site. It's, the best part about it, I think, is that there's going to be homeownership at the end of it as well as rentals. So it's not just, there's going to be equity for, for people who, who live there and who will build that equity over time, and I support this project, and I think it's a very good project for the neighborhood and for the city of Evanston.
And then, thank you, John, I appreciate that. And Rob, if you wouldn't mind coming up too? Then I'll kind of kick it to you last. And while we're trying to mute Kim, and then we'll have Rob speak next, but I'll just also set this up. So you, I wanted to introduce the Here to Stay Committee. These are, and this isn't everybody. We have other folks that were not able to attend today, mostly Fifth Ward residents. All the recommendations today are, are located in the Fifth Ward. So this group of people mostly, if not entirely, either live in the Fifth Ward or have worked in the Fifth Ward for a long period of time and are truly committed to, to the Ward. It also was important to me that I had not only advocates, which we tend to see a lot of affordable housing advocates on our committee, Sue Lowback is also on the Here to Stay Committee. She couldn't make it, she's out of town, but also find people that understand the market, the cost of construction and, and what drives it, you know, have looked at and evaluated different sites for these type of opportunities. And so I'm proud. Bob Paris, who spoke and supported this earlier, is a real estate broker. So it's made up of not only the advocate community, but also small to mid-sized developers, affordable housing developers, which you see in Rob and Richard Koenig and others, real estate agents, et cetera. So it's a, it's a good group of people. Is Kim muted? Okay. Hey, Kim, just.
I am. Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Good evening, everybody. I wanted to be here there with you in person. I am at the Community Hospital event. So I am on the Here to Stay Committee, and like Bobby, like, uh, Councilmember Burns said, we've been meeting for a long time, a couple of years almost, so to just see something, this pilot come to life and, you know, just having this vision. We desperately need housing. It's a, it's a huge housing shortage and particularly affordable housing. So as an individual, as a, as a born in the Fifth Ward, raised, you know, and, and living in the Second Ward, I'd love to see this happen. As an organization with Evanston credit to career, we support this because we know the need, and, you know, we all want our community to be, to be good, to be safe, and to, to have housing. So Here to Stay, I think, is an amazing committee because we want residents not to have to leave Evanston because they can't afford it. So I'm really hoping this project passes, and Councilmember Burns, kudos for a great job keeping this committee together. It's been a great committee, Realtors, joining forces, the city credit to career citizens. So I appreciate you. Thank you.
And before Rob, kind of explains the concept, which is not what we're voting on today. This is, the concept is, is something that I wanted us to be aware of, so when we think about what happens after acquisition, we, we, we have some ideas that, that we can think about. So the Here to Stay Committee, and Kim set it up perfectly, it's a committee to, to try to figure out how to help longtime Evanston residents in particular afford to stay in Evanston. Very simple. The scope initially, when, when we first organized, it was one, two, three, four, five, so create an inventory of all the affordable housing efforts underway and conduct an asset and gaps analysis to identify opportunities to expand housing affordability. Much of that is going to be worked on in our strategic housing plan, so we haven't focused on that as much. The second one was conducting underutilized land analysis to identify vacant or underutilized property, both public and private, and score the site based on its potential to become developed into workforce housing. Again, that's something that our staff is going to take on during the strategic housing process. Here's one that we did, we are taking on, and this is how this proposal came about. Partner with the faith community to develop a plan to leverage their resources and networks towards making a meaningful impact on affordable housing. Always say that quietly, our faith community owns a lot of property in Evanston, if you're not aware. Just in the Fifth Ward alone, there's five, you know, lots that are owned by the faith community that I can point to, and this is one of them. Some of them are rectories, many of them are vacant, many of them have sat vacant for a long period of time, and so the question is, while we have available vacant land, is there a way that we can work with the faith community to put it back to productive use? And then the last one I'll mention is, we've been working very closely, renew, renegotiating the affordability terms on housing developments that have expiring affordability restrictions. Brenshaw is, is probably the one we've been working on closely. What this means is there are for-profit owners of affordable housing that, once the affordability restrictions expire, intend on selling those properties. And so we've been working with Brenshaw currently to try to either renegotiate those terms or if they want to sell the property, to facilitate the next owners of the property so that they remain affordable in perpetuity. So those are the, the two areas that we've focused on the most. Because Charlotte is a part of our committee and was made, made aware of this opportunity through her work as a, as a real estate professional, she was able to bring this to us before it went out to the market. If it's sold on the market, we know it's going to be a million-dollar home, a half-a-million-dollar town home. I mean, the market has, has fully expressed what it believes of, of, of financially viable project, you know, takes in, in the Fifth Ward, and it's all, you know, really unaffordable, at least for the folks that live in the community, projects that they, they can't afford. And so what we, we asked Rob to do was to come up with a concept of what we could do to make this, these units affordable, to make them for sale. For rent projects are, are easier to do, they're easier to finance, which is why most of what we've been able to do here in Evanston are for rent. I think we're all excited about the opportunity to, to, to develop some units that we can sell, help folks kind of establish deeper roots in the community. So if, if Rob can kind of quickly explain the concept, and then I just want folks to remember, we're not voting on the concept today. We would just be authorizing the city manager to, to negotiate the purchase of the property, and then we'll have time to decide if we want to move forward with this concept, if we want to explore others.
All right. Good evening, council. My name is Rob Anthony. I'm the president at Community Partners for Affordable Housing. I also live in the Second Ward. So Alderman Burns and, and the committee asked us to just look at this site and what would make the, the most sense and to try to match that with what the, the needs we're seeing in the community are. And we've been really creating a lot of inclusionary housing units in Evanston, which is great for a certain segment of the population. What we've been seeing mostly created through inclusionary are smaller units and rental units. And so we've not been seeing affordable homeownership developed very often in the community, and we're not seeing larger units that can accommodate families, three-bedroom units. And so we tried to figure out what we could put on this site, but still also fit in very well to the community and, and match sort of what's in the neighborhood already. And so the idea was to split that existing lots, which would just require a couple small variants, variances to the church site, and then the remaining portion of the lot could be split into three lots, and on each of those lots, you could fit a, you could fit two three-bedroom condominiums on each of the lots, so a total of six three-bedroom condominiums. And then you can also, by right, put one ADU on each of those lots, so you can add three rental units as well, so a total of six ownership and three rental.
Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haddad Gharis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the funding is approved. Does someone have a motion relative to item SP4?
I'll move item SP4, ordinance 60-024, leaf blower ordinance, omitting Title VIII, Chapter 26, leaf blowers. Second.
Councilmember Reed moves introduction of ordinance 60-024. Councilmember Newsma, seconds. Is there any discussion? Council, Councilmember Newsma, followed by Ravel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we're good to go with the leaf blower ordinance itself. I'm comfortable maintaining the exclusion for the golf course and, you know, clarifying in the language here that the athletic field exclusion is not just all, are not just city athletic fields, but, but all athletic fields. I also want to acknowledge that in the memo here, there is a request from staff for additional funding, and I think we have received a memo from the Environment Board earlier this evening kind of endorsing that request. It's either $120,000 or $122,000. So I guess that's a question for staff. Is there any way, anywhere we might be able to find $122,000 laying around?
Good day, members of the City Council. Ike Obo, Director, Health and Human Services Department. We actually have a brief presentation regarding enforcement and to what you stated, or we just can carry on with the conversation, if that's okay.
Happy to see the presentation and then talk some more.
All right, perfect. All right, and Greg Olson, our Public Health Manager, will be doing the presentation.
All right, good evening, everyone. As I said, my name is Greg Olson. I'm the Public Health Manager for the Health and Human Services Department. So we're here to just provide a brief update on the leaf blower operations, how they've been going so far, as well as a few recommendations for the ordinance. So this will be a little bit of review. Our staff, we have a staff member who's on standby after hours and on weekends, and he also patrols some areas within the city in which we've received more complaints than normal. Or our overall process, it all begins with education. We've sent out many press releases, newsletters. When we receive a complaint, we send out a warning letter first as another educational attempt. When we receive complaints, again, we do notice a violation, followed by an administrative adjudication and possible fines to all parties involved, and that includes the property owners. We've recently modified the mechanism for which reporting violations for enforcement, which I'll get into in a little bit. Our website is Our website is frequently updated with useful information, resources, and we have a list of Evanston registered contractors, which is continuing to grow. And we've also applied and received a grant to hire an additional staff person to assist with enforcement. So our new 3-1-1 procedure, initially with the leaf blowers, we conducted it similar to how we do our other complaints. An inspector receives a complaint via 3-1-1 or email, and they proceed to investigate to see if it's a valid one. If the inspector is unable to verify the complaint in the field, whether there's a visual problem, we can't see it, or a timing problem, we're never there at the right time when it's happening, that's when we rely on photographic evidence or video evidence from the, from the complainant. So just some brief examples, a lot of times we've been sent pictures of roosters that people have on their property that which they, they shouldn't have. We've been sent pictures of bird feeders spilling over, overflowing garbage, anything you can think of that we can't physically see at that time, we rely on the residents to send those, those pictures. However, it was pretty quickly that that enforcement procedure proved problematic when we talk about leaf blowers. One reason is because our health inspector was unable to verify each complaint in the field, solely because the number of requests that we received were way more than we anticipated. Last November, we had 500 requests compared to, I can't remember, like 30 the year before. And then also just being there at that specific time when the leaf blower is being used. And then coupled with that, residents also reported that having to submit a picture or having to submit a video was unduly burdensome. So with those two things, we made the decision that reporting a violation no longer requires a photo or a video, but what is required is a signed witness statement from the complainant saying that they saw the violation take place at the time and at the location, which they said. That's submitted with a leaf blower violation, and that's specific only to leaf blower violations. And so with our 3-1-1 requests, this is for the beginning of the year to present, obviously wintertime, there's no leaves, so it's pretty slow, but as things start to get green, it warms up, leaf blowers get into action, we see our complaints go up a little bit. And April and May, the ones in parentheses are from last year. So compared to last year, our number of complaints are half that for April, and then in May, we're less than half. We had 20 this year in May compared to 74 of last year. So our outreach, it's, it's doing its thing, it's working. Obviously, we can always do better with outreach, but our educational aspect, as well as our enforcement, has been hitting the ears of people that we wanted to, and that's obvious with the number of complaints we've received. But with our enforcement, it helped reveal some of these unforeseen issues. Leaf blowers has turned into a very more, much more complicated thing than I think many of us thought it would be. First obvious one was financial, the inability for each landscaper to transition to the electric leaf blowers. That was a very big hurdle, as well as paying for any fines I have accumulated with, since they were unable to make that transition. A language barrier. Initially, registering for a leaf blower contractor was only available in English. Since our last meeting, we've met with community development who issues the contractor registrations, and they now offer, I believe a public speaker mentioned it earlier, that they now offer a opportunity to call and have a one-on-one meeting, either virtual or in person, that can help walk through the application process with the assistance of an interpreter. Outreach, obviously, our outreach initially didn't reach every avenue that it should have because the ban still came as a surprise to many landscapers. Once the, the landscapers started coming to a lot of our city council meetings, we started working with Evanston Latino Engagement Librarian, and she opened up a channel, a communication channel for us to the landscapers, which really, really helped out in terms of getting us all on the same page and hearing the voices of who, who we need to. And the last unforeseen issue was city exemptions, and that was one of the things that's been mentioned frequently, is the unfairness, how the city was exempt while other entities were not exempt, even though they were performing the same activities. So based on this, two amendments to the ordinance we're suggesting. One would be requiring all landscapers to register with the city. We can continue to improve upon language barriers and how to make it a little bit easier, but what we've set up right now with community development is our, our step forward to make the process easier. But by having landscapers register with the city, it will make enforcement a lot easier because what we're seeing now out in the field is a lot of unmarked trucks, unmarked vehicles, vans, that we really don't have any way to follow up with and enforce because we're not allowed to look up the vehicle registration using license plates. So having them register as a landscaping contractor, it requires them to list all their vehicles that they use, make model, color, license plate, so we can easily identify them that way. And then the other amendment would be to extend the exceptions of the ordinance, not just to the city, but to all entities that are operating in the same activities. So this would result in the, the fairness that many of us have heard is not happening right now with the current ordinance. And I believe the next up would be Kara to talk about the funding.
Good evening. I'm Kara Pratt, the Sustainability and Resilience Manager, here to discuss the additional funding requested based on feedback that we got from the landscaping community. So as you all may have heard in the city press release, all $600,000 of our sustained Evanston funding has now been allocated. Over $250,000, or 42% of that funding, was awarded to local landscaping companies for equipment electrification, which mostly includes leaf blowers, but also includes electric lawn mowers, trimmers, and some other equipment. Since we ran out of funding, there are nine additional Evanston-based landscaping companies that have requested assistance amounting to $122,000. We have exhausted all available funds in the Sustainability Fund. As you all know, you allocated $100,000 of the Good Neighbor Fund for this purpose as well, and we have no extra money now in the Sustainability Fund. So the question to City Council is, would City Council like to fund this request this year? And the second question we have answered already, which is, what is the funding source? And our CFO has clarified that the funding source would be the General Fund Reserve. And I believe that's the end of our presentation.
So Councilmember Nusma still has the floor.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So just to clarify, the $122,000 is after already having taken into account the $100,000 from Good Neighbor Fund?
Yes, that is correct.
So it's $122,000 that, that we're looking for?
Yes.
Okay. And do we have any indication that that would be the last and final request?
No.
We don't? Yeah, that's a crystal ball, and who knows what the crystal ball would say?
Correct.
But, yeah, so it's, it's for nine additional Evanston-based landscapers. How many landscapers have we served already?
Over 20.
Over 20. Okay, so this would put us around 30. Do we need a motion to make this happen? This is a procedural question.
Thank you, Councilmember Nusma. Yes, a motion to allocate the funding would be necessary.
Okay. With the understanding that this is the last time we are going to go to our coffers to support the cause here, I will make a motion to take $122,000 out of the General Fund Reserve to meet the, meet the remaining need for these nine companies.
Second point of order. Are you amending the ordinance before us, or what are we doing?
Those are two separate issues.
So, so, great question. So let me just, and again, I find our procedure is funny around here. So can, could you, so can someone just make a motion? I mean, obviously, it's separate from the ordinance, it would have to be after this ordinance is dispensed with. But can someone just make a motion that's not a part of a resolution, just make a motion from the floor to allocate city dollars without it being in the packet or anything?
So I think this item was on the agenda for the leaf blower update and then included in the packet as a request for funding. So I think from an agenda OMA standpoint, it is appropriate.
And from a, just like, that's how we spend money, it doesn't require a resolution or a...
Correct. It doesn't require a resolution.
Okay. So I would just say, as the chair, I would...
Point of order.
Hold on one second. I'm curious to hear the point of order because this whole thing makes me unbelievably uncomfortable, procedurally and substantively. But one thing that I can definitely state as a minimum, I'll, I'll definitely require anything that meets the legal standard to be made in writing. Because again, the idea of spending $122,000 based on what occurs verbally is, makes me even more uncomfortable than any other considerations. But go ahead, Councilmember Reed.
My understanding is that a motion to expend taxpayer money certainly requires a resolution. Yeah, I, I, I think that's, I, I don't have the state law to quote right in front of me, but, or council rules, but the expenditure of taxpayer money needs a resolution, needs to be backed up by the, some official action of the council that is also backed up by a resolution. That's, that's how we spend money.
Well, it's not how SP3 worked.
I'm sorry?
It's not how SP3 worked.
Well, it should have.
No argument from me. So if the points of order are done, Councilmember Nusma still has the floor.
I would like to... Point of order, I just want to, sorry, SP3 was not the expenditure of money, it was authorized in the city manager to negotiate, is my understanding. So it's not the...
The main issue here is the ordinance, and hopefully we're all on board with the proposed changes, we can put this behind us. This issue has taken way, way, way too long. We've learned some important lessons that hopefully we will keep in mind moving forward for whatever the issue might be regarding intentional engagement with those who are affected by proposed ordinances. But it's time for us to move on, it's time for our staff to move on. It's wonderful that Ms. Pratt speaks Spanish and can help the landscapers through this, but how much of your time, Kara, have you spent on this leaf blower ordinance, would you say, over the last few months?
Hundreds of hours.
Hundreds of hours. And, yeah, the leaf blower ordinance does almost nothing to advance our CARP goals. So I just want to keep this in perspective. We have, as a result of significant community input and demand from our constituents, come up with this resolution. We have, are in the process of correcting some of the unintended side effects. I'm comfortable approving some additional money, we can sort out the procedure for, however that needs to happen, but let's get this done, let's put it behind us. We have big and important things that we are going to need to focus on. So I'm ready to move on this one.
Councilmember Revel, followed by Reed, followed by Harris, followed by Sufferton, followed by Hadda Gharis.
So we're back to focusing just on the ordinance before us? I mean, because that's, that, that's, that's where my comment goes. Because I have, I have an amendment to propose to the...
Yeah, the answer is, yeah, and I just want to be, I mean, again, my own discomfort aside, which we'll get to later maybe, the motion on the floor is introduction of the ordinance.
Right, okay.
Well, there was a motion in a second to allocate the money. For the sake of conversation, let me withdraw that motion right now and reintroduce it at the proper time.
Okay. My amendment is just to correct what I think is a typo in the proposed ordinance. It's Section 8-26-6, permitted hours of leaf blower use, and it, as it's written in our packet, it says that the hours for Sunday through Friday are 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., when in fact it should say Monday through Friday is 7:00 a.m. So I have that in an email I will send to everybody right this moment. Because the Sunday hours are, are only 12, 12:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m., so I just thought we ought to make that little correction. So I move, I move to amend the proposed ordinance to change Sunday to Monday. This is on page, page, page 156 of the packet.
Councilmember Revel moves to amend ordinance 60-024 to correct the typo relative to the days and the permitted hours of leaf blower use. Councilmember Nusma, seconds. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll on the amendment?
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda Gharis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns is not here. Councilmember Sufferton.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the ordinance is amended. Councilmember Revel, you still have the floor? Are you done? Okay. So now we go to Councilmember Reed, followed by Harris, followed by Sufferton, followed by Hadda Gharis.
Yeah, I support the changes. I even support in principle what Councilmember Nusma is pushing to do and others to provide the necessary funding to get us over the hump with the, at least 10 folks who are currently seeking funding. I do have some questions about the ordinance, so, one, I, sorry, sir, but I, I do not believe that golf courses should be exempt from the ordinance. You know, my understanding is golf has a long history, it's been played for many, many years, and folks did just fine before the current equipment, and I heard what you said, and I appreciate you sharing that. But I do think, I don't think that that's necessarily a good enough reason to exempt golf courses. I don't think that's the will of the council, but I'll share that. I am curious about the exemption for now all athletic fields. One, how is, there's no definition, I'm not seeing within the ordinance a definition of athletic field, so is my backyard, if I put up a volleyball post or a badminton, you know, post, is it an athletic field? How do we define athletic fields?
If it's the wish of the council, we can provide that definition. In our conversation with staff regarding this matter, it pretty much is irrespective to any field any individual can, can play on, but we can certainly clean, clean it up.
I, I think if we're going to say, I don't, what's the definition? I'd hate to do this, but what is the definition of a field, then? If someone's yard, then if they claim it's an athletic field, would they have some recourse if we were to hold them accountable for this ordinance? And so I do think that that definition, particularly because it's a, a specific exemption, needs to be clarified. Really, I think it just needs to not be there at all, personally, but if we're going to put it there, it needs to be clarified. That's it, thank you.
Councilmember Harris, followed by Sufferton, followed by Hadda Gharis.
Thank you so much for the floor. I agree with Councilmember Reed, and I'm a golfer, but I think that there are inequities. If we're saying no gas, then we're saying no gas. And golf course, you make money. Again, I'm a... Again, I'm a golfer, but golf also has racial, not saying your golf course, but we understand the racial implications, and to then say this one entity is exempt because it's expensive. Our, our community members told us it was expensive, and that's how we came up with the first set of money. So I too am not in favor of supporting the exemption. This, again, is an example of, we make laws, we set laws, and then we have to figure out through them, and we need to do a better job of doing that upfront. So I'm not in favor of the exemption. I understand we need to, all fields, if we're saying no gas, and we are concerned about the community, then we're concerned about the community, not about the lesser of those pushing them out, because they're not concerned about the community. So I do struggle with this, and on the same token, I am not in favor of the additional $120,000. We need to figure some things out, and I think we've extended ourselves well. So, and I have gotten feedback from residents, they are not in favor of the additional funding, and also not of the golf course exemptions, for sure. So I agree with you, Councilmember Reed.
Councilmember Suffertin, followed by Hadekatis.
Yes, I just want to make sure I understand. We've spent a quarter of a million dollars on equipment for private businesses, because this is something that we imposed upon them, and they were not able to absorb that cost, correct? We've already allocated $250,000.
That is correct, but that $250,000 includes other equipment that landscapers are proactively electrifying, like trimmers and lawn mowers.
Right. Okay, so, and then this additional 122, that's without a reduction or an offset anywhere else in the budget? That would just come straight out of reserves, is what's on the table right here?
That's what our CFO has communicated would be appropriate.
Did we look at any, or do you know? I'm asking you a question on behalf of somebody else. Do you know if there was any consideration of where we could make reductions or offsets to come up with $122,000?
We had conversations with the Health Department, with Public Works, we looked at our own sustainability fund, and then we also asked internally if there was any ARPA funding available for this.
Okay. Because I do have a concern, I mean, the community at large benefits from the reduced noise and pollution of the leaf blowers, but dipping into reserves without offsetting it anywhere else is a concern, and I'd like, when we get to the point where we're trying to find $122,000, for us to find something stronger than just dipping into reserves. So if there's an opportunity for a reduction or offset somewhere else in the budget, that would make sense, but I feel like also, and I haven't followed finance and budget as closely as people who are on it, but isn't this the type of unbudgeted expense that should go there? I think making the choice to dip into reserves for this is a pretty serious decision, that as much as I would like to put this conversation behind us forever, isn't worth rushing into.
I could not agree more with you on the merits. I do think the threshold that finance and budget has set for what triggers things getting sent to them is higher than 122.
Is it? Okay.
But, but on the merit, I think you're right on the money.
I just think it's, it's, there are multiple concerns. Like, one is, are we setting ourselves up for future equipment expenditures by private businesses based on ordinances that we pass, that they cannot absorb? And then also, you know, again, without, it'd be one thing if we're like, and we're not going to spend this $122,000 elsewhere, but this is outside of the budget entirely, and that's a concern. So, other than that, great memo. I appreciate all the work that you put into this.
Councilmember Hadekatis, followed by Kelly.
Yeah. I'm very much in favor of having to spend the $122,000. At this point, we have taken a small business community that is already struggling to stay here and have really impacted their businesses. I want to reiterate for folks listening, even with the grants, this is impacting these small business owners' labor costs by probably 25% to 30%, and, you know, when, we have to respect people's work. And so when, you know, this is, it's a hard pill to swallow, but costs are going up across the board, and this is something that your local small landscaper did not plan on. This isn't, this wasn't their decision. That being said, I appreciate, I just want, Kara, your hard work. I think you've gone above and beyond, and I'm really happy that you and your team have gotten to this point, and so I feel it's really important to get those nine last businesses taken care of. I appreciate the, the move to resolve the fairness around the exemptions. That being said, I do not imagine that any of these small businesses have big contracts clearing off athletic fields. And so, just for that reason, I, I can't support having any sort of exemption. Trying to read the room and see if a motion would even have any chance, but I think I could support it if there were no exemptions, but I did, I also feel that we have to kind of right our past mistakes with the funding.
Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you, and thank you, Kara, for all your hard work on this. I know it's, it's been a huge amount of work. I'm also concerned about the expenditure. I wish it were going, I did advocate that $100,000 be the threshold. Unfortunately, the majority on finance and council set it much higher, that threshold for spending that exceeds budget. So how much have we spent on electrifying landscaping in this city? Have we...
That would be a question for how it works.
Okay, that's...
Good evening, Mayor Biss, Clerk Mendoza, members of the council, City Manager Stowe. Councilmember Kelly, I was only able to catch half that question, would you mind repeating it?
So I, I just wanted to get an idea with, in terms of the expenses that we're spending for, to help other businesses, what we've spent on electrification of landscaping within Public Works?
I believe it is $43,000.
$43,000?
Yes.
Okay. So I guess, you know, I'm slightly concerned about, I mean, I don't like leaf blowers, the community doesn't like them, but I know, in Skokie, for example, I know their Public Works has, I believe they've gone entirely, converted to electric for landscaping, and their feeling was, you know, we're not going to tell anybody to convert to electric if we aren't modeling it first. So I know this isn't going to change, you know, this proposal here, but I do feel strongly, and, you know, and then they're doing a slow roll out with it, with a lot of education before, you know, passing it, even, they don't even have an ordinance yet, they're just doing a lot of education, and again, they're doing it themselves first, so I think that if there's any way we can kind of merge into that model, I think that would be helpful and residents would appreciate it.
And we have switched completely all electric. Our greenways is all electric blowers, we've got all electric trimmers, we got all-electric pole saws as well. We are looking to switch into all-electric chainsaws, however, we're not able to find chaps that are rated for those yet, so we want to consider safety over electrification. The only time we use, we, I believe we have, I think it's two or three combustion engine blowers, the only time we use those are for the sports fields, and when we say sports fields, we're talking baseball fields, for the infield to be able to dry out the infield mix, so our organizations can play on it.
Okay, so...
But yeah, we are.
Yeah, so just so we're included in that, so anything that we're exempted from, then certainly I would not want to, you know, hold others accountable to using. As much as I value, don't like leaf blowers, if we're not exempting ourselves, I mean, if we are exempting ourselves, then others in a similar circumstance, I would expect to also be exempted.
Yes, and that was, that was the intention with the amendment, by saying all sports fields. We were thinking of Ridgeville Park District, of high schools, of, you know, just any school districts here, so that they would be able to do the same with their infields.
So the $43,000 covers all the electrification for our landscaping? I mean, with the exception of what you mentioned?
For us, the city of Evanston, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
At this time, no one is asking to speak for the first time, so we go back to Councilmember Newsma with a minute and a half left.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to clarify Canal Shores' desire for an exemption, so, Mr. Rooney, if you could answer a few questions. It's my understanding that you are requesting the exemption, not for the small backpack style blowers, but for the big, you know, trailer that the little mini tractor pulls, it looks like a snuffleupagus to me, four-stroke engine, it's not something you strap onto your back, it's a specialized piece of equipment.
So, so we have two battery-operated leaf blowers that people wear on their backs. We also have one gas blower that people wear on their backs, which we use sometimes when we cannot get that big powerful mower into a space on the course that has to be cleared off. So we do, we do use a gas leaf blower on somebody's back in a very limited situation.
Is there any way you could use electric blowers instead of that one backpack blower?
You know, what I've been told by the superintendent is we need to use it in certain spots where we can't get that big blower, which you've been out to the golf course and see, into an area, you know, where there's been some debris that's come on the course. But that's the, that is the one we are primarily concerned with.
So limited use for that.
Very limited use, yes.
Backpack blower.
Right. We use, we use the blue, the gas, excuse me, we use the battery-operated ones everywhere we can, where we're just cutting regular grass, like, that isn't so short as I was talking about.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Still, no one is requesting to speak for a first time, so we go to Councilmember Reed with three minutes left.
Yeah, I'm, we're missing a colleague, and that could influence the next, next vote. Oh, yeah, good, yeah. I'm first going to move that we eliminate the exemption, having a clear idea where that might go, and then I plan to make a motion, if, if that does not work, to clarify athletic fields. So I, I will move that we strike the language in 8268, which is the exemptions. One second.
So what I'm going to do is allow a vote, and then only ask you to retroactively send it if it passes?
Yes.
Is that, Councilmember Reed moves to amend ordinance 60-0-24 by removing the exemptions, all the exemptions, Councilmember?
Yes.
Councilmember Hadekatis, seconds. For discussion on the amendment, Councilmember Revelle, who has three minutes and 40 seconds left.
Okay. Well, I guess I'd like Matt Rooney to come back to answer questions, because I got a little confused with your answer from Councilmember Newsma, because your, your very detailed position paper to us talked about that you have these real mowers?
Yes.
And then you have, and then you have a, and they, they're the things that cut the grass super, super low?
Yes, ma'am.
But in order for them to function, so, because it really messes them up if they get into sticks and bad stuff on the, on the course, you use this turbine blower, but that's not what you were just describing just this last moment.
I was describing two things. Number one was this big turbine blower, which is the four-cycle one, but Councilmember asked me if we also sometimes did use the backpack one, and in some very limited circumstances, we do use that.
Right, but, I mean, because it seems to me from your position paper, this discussion about your turbine blower is really helpful to understand. I mean, that's just a super powerful thing that blows all the...
Yes, ma'am.
...bad stuff out of the way of this real mower, real R-E-L. And, you know, and if you couldn't use that kind of equipment, you're saying you'd have to use back...
We would, we would buy, we'd have to buy 10 more backpack blowers, hire 10 more people to use them?
Right.
And then clean the course that way.
Yeah, I think the biggest expense would be then the fact that you'd need all these extra workers to be able to...
And I do want to say that the, wouldn't the cleanup job would not be as good as we need, and so the equipment would have to deal with damaged equipment as well.
Right, yeah.
I mean, it'd be inferior product, even though we just had spent a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Right, yeah. And, I mean, and Canal Shores, you're a community golf course, you try to provide lower rates to, you know, to be more affordable to the community as a whole, you've got big, important goals for engaging more youth, disadvantaged youth, et cetera. But, you know, not being able to have a golf course that people, that, you know, real golfers are looking forward to playing on, you'd be at a real disadvantage to other, other golf courses and other communities that are taking care of their golf course in this manicured way.
Yes, everything you said is true.
So I, I, I really think we need to, this is a way for us to support Canal Shores. They are, you are taking care of a really big piece of property that we, that we lease from MWRD and sublease to you, and if you couldn't keep going, you know, we'd have, then we'd have a real big budget item on the city's hands.
Yes, we would be at a definite competitive disadvantage to every golf course I can think of in the immediate area, in terms of what our, what our golf course would look like, and how good the greens would be, and how good the fairways would be. It would definitely hurt us in terms of our business, and as you say, we, we, 82 acres is Canal Shores that we take care of, 52 acres of that is in the city, and that you, if we couldn't do this, Parks and Recs would have to take it over.
Right, yeah. Well, I, so I strongly oppose this attempt to at least eliminate the, the exception for golf courses. We haven't even talked about, you know, this would be Public Works to talk about the last sentence and the exceptions about needing, you know, for construction projects, so anyway, thank you.
Sorry, just a little housekeeping over here. This time, no one is asking to speak for a first time, so we go back to Councilmember Harris with three minutes, 10 seconds left.
Thank you, again. Again, I struggle with privilege, and I golf, I golf, I have a set, I golf. I didn't see you here when this community needed support, and, and you knew you had gas, that you used some type of gas, so I didn't see, when this was happening, your organization, supporting them, to say, I get it, we, we've got to do this as well. And I struggle with that, because we were trying to figure out how to help a community and save the community at the same time. So, as Councilmember Kelly said, we find ourselves here, time and time again, creating policy and procedure, and then having to backtrack and think about it. That's not how we should be doing business, and what's good for one should be good for all, as we talk about Evanston and being equitable. Golfing is a privilege. We've talked about, we're killing people with the gas backpacks, and we're not, that we were helping our community, but I remember people saying, we're also helping the landscapers, because they're the ones suffering from having to use this. So I'm, you don't need to get up, nope. I'm at a crossroads. I'm at a crossroads, and I'll be very clear and honest about that. I'm going to ask Director Cano to come up and speak about, if we make this change, what does that mean for the city? How long would it take us to make that change? Because as a parent, you don't tell your kids to not smoke, and you smoke in their face. And we're not parents, but we have been elected to protect the city, and now we're saying something we won't do, but enforcing it, and I don't like that. So can you explain to me what this means to the operation, and is there a point in which we can change the, where we can follow our own laws?
Yeah, understood. And again, I do want to reiterate that we have gone electric for everything that we could and for the... could, and for the activities and the tasks that we perform as well that we can. I strongly, strongly recommend to allow the exemption, at least for baseball fields. We do have a commitment to our baseball organizations. Right now, the electric blowers that we have do not produce the CFM that allows us to prep the field right after, let's say, a rainstorm, where, you know, the, the organization is coming in and has to meet, you know, a starting time. At this time, those blowers, the electric blowers that are in the market, we haven't found any sufficient to be able to produce the, the CFMs. Once we do, we would definitely be happy to switch to it, but right now, we do have responsibility to, to the baseball organizations. I also want to stress the exemption for all roadwork. That's mostly when we're paving streets, larger streets. Right now, when we're pothole patching, we do use the electric blowers. For the little, small potholes, we're able to get in there, we're able to sweep, sweep them out, but for the larger paving projects or patching projects, we have to use more compacted CFM compressed air, where it would be a toe behind air compressor that would actually be blowing everything out. We do run, run the street sweeper through there, but in order to get that adhesion, in order to make sure that pavement lasts for, you know, 20, 30 years, we need to get it as free of dust and debris as possible. So, that would not only be us, but for any I-DOT projects that come in town as well, you know, they require that, that CFM as well.
So, you said, first of all, it doesn't exist right now for the baseball fields, to be able to get them to the status that they need to be?
Correct. We have not found any that, that we're able to use to get them to that status that they have to be.
Okay. And then for our pavement, there's not the right capacity to get the debris out of there, so the adhesion. So, those are two things that don't exist, that we can't do anything about and do our business.
Correct. We have not found any of those that, that exist, and the reason we went to all sports field was, again, thinking, trying to be equitable, okay, what if there's a park district, what if there's a school? But for us, we really just need it for the baseball fields, the infields, that's what, what's really important in order for the organizations to play in.
And have we talked to Skokie to see, or do they even do organized baseball like we do?
I have to check with them. We, I don't believe we...
Could you please do that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. That, that was it. I just needed to understand the capacity of what exists, what doesn't, and what that looks like. Again, I don't believe in passing ordinances and laws to people that we can't adhere to.
Yeah. And we're all, again, I want to reiterate, we're all on board?
Everything else is.
Yes.
Yep. Thank you.
Still, no one is asking to speak for a first or second time, so we go back to Councilmember Sufferton for a second crack with two minutes and 35 seconds left.
Sure. I just want to remind everybody that the success of Canal Shores is important to the city, because if Canal Shores is not successful, the maintenance of the 50-some acres in Evanston on MWRD land would fall to the city. MWRD does not maintain property to parkland standards, so, you know, the 122,000, as we're talking about, is nothing compared to the budget hole we'd be talking about potentially creating if we were to not be supportive of Canal Shores and their solvent operations.
At this time, no one is asking to speak for a first or second time, so we go back to Councilmember Newsma for a third opportunity with 50 seconds left.
Councilmember Harris addressed my question. Thank you.
Still, no one asking to speak for a first, second time, we go back to Councilmember Reed with a minute 50 left.
Thank you. I, I just first want to start, a minute and 50, just want, first want to start off with, you know, we have a commitment, I think, Councilmember Revelle, you're someone who likely supports this quite a bit, which is that we want to see people restoring the natural habitat and not having manicured lawns. That's the direction that we want to go, because we know that it's better for the environment, better for our ecosystem, better for the survival of our species, and many So, I, it's just hard for me to wrap my head around, well, we have to have these, you know, perfectly manicured golf spaces, and it's worthy of an exemption here. And then I also want to say, you know, would it put Canal Shore at a competitive disadvantage? Maybe. I, I will trust your opinion on that more than anyone else's. I mean, it could be a selling point that, hey, we're a green golf course, come, come, come here, but we know that the ordinance puts our landscapers at a competitive disadvantage, and we were fine with that. And so, you know, I, I just don't understand why we're not fine with it potentially here. Lastly, I want to ask, what about, why artificial turf fields? Why do they need leaf blowers?
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
Oh, yes. And why do we need artificial turf field, or why are artificial turf fields exempted?
Again, we were just trying to be a little bit more equitable, since we were asking for an exemption, we asked that, you know, all sports fields could be that, but realistically, we only need the, the baseball infields.
Okay. And, and I'm sorry, just to dig a little deeper on the, the construction projects, so you're saying that we take, on a construction project, we're repaving a road, we take a leaf blower out and blow a bunch of asphalt dust everywhere?
No, so we do, so, there's, there's different options with that. So, let's take cracked ceiling for an example, where you're routing that, there's a dustless option, so as it blows, it's actually capturing everything and, and getting it, getting it back up. So, we could blow it, you still could wet it down a little bit to blow everything down so the dust doesn't get, but at least you corner everything, you're, you're easier to pick it up. So, we, we try to limit dust wherever, wherever we can.
Okay. I am going to, if my colleagues who seconded this and support it, I know, I'm, hold on, and I'm going to, I've already made a motion, my motion's on the floor now. What I'm going to do is maybe make an amendment to my motion, which is to leave in, and I'll send this in writing if, presuming it passes, but to leave in construction projects involving paving, repair, patching, or public, of public streets, and that's it, as far as... So, that's the original motion.
So, you're withdrawing the first motion and making a new one?
I'm friendly amending my own motion.
It's good to be friends with yourself.
Yes. Sometimes it's harder than others.
No comment. Is there a second to the friendly amendment, is there a friendly second to the friendly amendment?
Original motion stands, I'm fine with that.
Councilmember Burns.
Canal Shores is a nonprofit, correct? I'm just a little confused, we, we're comparing non-for-profits to for-profit businesses, so if somebody can help me understand that, if you desire to, because I don't understand why we're comparing the two. And then, if no one wants to respond to that?
I'm happy to respond to that.
Okay, please, yeah.
I mean, the NFL is a nonprofit business.
Well, I'm saying specifically Canal Shores and the landscaping community. Why, why do we feel like that is an apples-to-apples comparison? You know, specifically with the discussion we're having now, because I'm not following that, and you can spend a little, a moment on that. And I think, secondly, I thought what we were trying to do, and hopefully what we've done, and if we haven't, we need to allocate more funds to do it, is to support our landscapers with the equipment they need to make the transition. And if you feel like you're not being supported, then we need to continue to fund you until you feel supported. Now, we do understand, or I understand, that it's going to take some time for the market to adjust, because what should be happening is, in areas that don't have the same regulations as us, you should continue to be able to use the same equipment you've used. And so, we're really talking about equipment that needs to be used in Evanston because of our regulations, which is why I thought we approved funding for our Evanston, small Evanston landscapers, so that they wouldn't be at a disadvantage. So, everybody is on the same level playing field in Evanston, and if you, if you operate an Evanston-based business, if anything, you have an advantage against other companies that are coming from outside of Evanston, that don't have the funding made available to them to service Evanston property owners. So, and again, so, and that, that's, that's, that's what I would like to achieve. I said very clearly from, from the very beginning of my term, that when we, as we advance our climate action resilience goals, we need to set aside the necessary subsidy to bring as many people along with us without financially burdening them, and I meant also our small business community, which is why, which is what I thought we've done at this point. And I think even earlier tonight, I wasn't here for that vote, I don't think, but we, we supported additional funding. No, that did not pass? We're about to do, where is that in the agenda?
At some point.
Okay, cool. Okay. Well, I will, I'm supporting that. And, and so, please, during that discussion, let's talk about exactly what we need, because I plan to support it, and if we need more, we should allocate as much as we need to make sure that every Evanston-based landscaper has the funding they need to equip themselves with the, with the tools that they need to, to do the job here in Evanston. So, I'm happy to, to leave the exemptions on, if only to better understand what would happen if we removed the exemptions. To Councilmember Sufferton's point, what would we need to then take on? Like, we just, if we're going to do it, let's take some time to figure out what that actually means, and so I'm not prepared to, I don't think, vote on any, removing any exemptions today, but if there's enough support, you know, even if it doesn't pass, maybe we should, you know, come back the next meeting and at least get a better sense of, of what, you know, what, what those decisions would result in. That's all, Chair, thank you.
I withdraw my motion.
At this time, no one is asking to, so the Councilmember Reed withdraws his motion, so there's not a motion on the floor to amend ordinance 60-0-24, the ordinance is simply to introduce it. At this time, no one is asking to speak for a first or second time, so for a third crack, we go back to Councilmember Revelle with 45 seconds left.
Well, if the amendment is being withdrawn, but I do want to say, I mean, I am not a big fan of manicured lawns. You come to my house, you'll understand that I have hardly a blade of grass anywhere in sight, but a lot of people do, and I don't play golf, but a lot of people do. A lot of residents use the golf course for walking, for dog walking, for bird walk, bird viewing, et cetera. It's a, it's a wonderful resource for more than just the golfing community, and in terms of the financial hit that Canal Shores would have to take to, you know, if they could no longer use their turbine blowers, in addition to purchasing the equipment, which, you know, was mostly just a one-time deal, they'd be adding another $200,000 every year to their budget for the extra workforce that they would need to be able to use the inefficient backpack, backpack blower. So, I'm, I'm very glad, Councilmember Reed, that you have withdrawn your motion. Thank you.
Still, no one wants to speak for a first or second time, so again, for third opportunities, we go back to Councilmember Harris with 10 seconds left.
Oh, so, I, as a season ticket holder to the Cubs, I've already asked Director Kano to figure out how they do it, and I'm, I'm pretty sure it's not gas. I am willing to stand down for a year or two, but I would like to come back to this and have some resolution, so that we're done. But it has to be equitable. If you need extra people, we got some landscapers who now need jobs because they needed to change their equipment, but I'll stand down for a year to see and assess, but I hope this come, it will come back if, if I'm here, it's going to come back.
Still, no one wants to speak for a first or second time, we go back to Councilmember Newsma with 50 seconds left.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hope we can draw this one to a close and claim a victory for actually solving the problem that the community brought to us. The problem that was brought to us was not, oh, these leaf blowers are so bad for the environment or for the, for the climate, they're a drop in the bucket when it comes to carbon emissions. People came to us and demanded action because they don't like the noise of the gas-powered leaf blowers. The ordinance in front of us solved that problem. There was one unintended side effect with landscapers that were disproportionately impacted, that's a separate discussion. People weren't complaining to us because the golf course snuffleufagus was too loud, it was because of the leaf blower in their next-door neighbor's yard at, you know, 8:30 in the morning when they were trying to work on their conference call. So, let's pass this ordinance as it's drafted tonight, claim a victory that we deserve, and then we can have a discussion about extending the, the subsidies to make sure the, the small businesses aren't continually, are, don't continue to be disproportionately impacted.
At this time, no one is asking to speak for a first, second, or a third time. The person asking to speak for a fourth time has time expired. Councilmember Reed, I believe you were going to make a motion, a new amendment, is that correct?
Yes.
So, I'd like to ask you to just make that amendment quickly, please.
Yes, that's what I'll do. I, I would move that we, I don't have the language, but maybe give direction to staff, this is only for introduction, to come back with the definition of athletic field, because otherwise, I'm going to advise folks to play some sport in their yards.
So, let me just do a little informal temperature check. I, I think that's a good idea. Is, is anybody in disagreement with the idea that the, an ordinance that we pass should include a definition of a, of a term like that? So, I would, I would respectfully request that we not make any motions or votes, that we simply ask staff to have a amendment prepared for council's consideration when this comes back for action. Is that okay with you, Councilmember?
Sure.
In that case, seeing no further discussion with the clerk, please take the roll on the motion, which is a motion to introduce ordinance 60-0-24.
With, with the one amendment.
With the, with the day typocorrected, thank you, Councilmember, sorry about that. You're absolutely right.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Hadekakis?
No.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
With seven voting in favor and two voting against, the motion carries, and ordinance 60-0-24, as amended, is introduced, will be back in two weeks for consideration for action, and there will be an amendment made available for council's consideration to include a definition of athletic fields. Is there a motion relative to item SP5?
I move for the acceptance of ordinance 58-0, 58-0-24, establishing ranked choice voting for elected officials in the city of Evanston as approved by voter referendum.
Second.
Second.
Councilmember Harris moves passage of ordinance 58-0-24. Councilmember Newsma, seconds. Councilmember Reed?
Thank you. I asked this question the last time we were here, didn't get a clear answer, so, to the Corporation Council, why are we passing this ordinance now?
Thank you, Councilmember Reed. Same answer as before. This helps clarify and establish this within the code, and instructs the county clerk to implement ranked choice voting.
But, why, why is this, we didn't contemplate passing an ordinance previously, so why are we doing that now?
At this time, we're doing that because we've received some pushback on implementation, and we've received advice that this helps clarify it for the county.
And how does this help clarify it for the county?
It specifically instructs the county to implement the will of the voters pursuant to the referendum.
But doesn't the referendum do that?
It does, this just adds a little bit of extra clarification for the county clerk.
Okay. And I'm, I'm really unclear why no one up here has questions about this. You have a colleague who is a former local election official, really steeped in election law, long before I served as clerk, and who is saying that we're doing this wrong, and have been screaming it from the rooftops since the beginning. So, I'm going to quickly read a letter that I sent to our former county clerk, Karen Yarborough, and I plan to send to Cedric Giles, and I plan to send it to Monica Gordon when she take, if and when she takes office. Dear Clerk Yarborough and Elections Team, I'm writing to you in my capacity as the current Eighth Ward Councilmember, former City Clerk of Evanston, and registered Cook County voter. I'm aware your office has expressed concerns related to the implementation of ranked choice voting, of the ranked choice voting referendum passed by the city of Evanston. I, too, have concerns that the RCV referendum, as delivered to the voters, presents significant legal and constitutional issues. I believe these issues necessitate your office's continued intervention to deny any improper implementation of ranked choice voting. The referendum is unfortunately marred by several legally fatal deficiencies. They are as follows. One, the, the referendum is not self-executing. The language of the RCV referendum lacks the necessary specificity under, required under Illinois law, as emphasized by the Illinois Supreme Court in the case Leck v. Michelson. Michelson. Evanston's RCV referendum fails to provide a complete procedural framework for its implementation. Exactly as the referendum in the Leck case had to be interpreted, supplemented, and modified in order to be implemented, so too does Evanston's ranked choice voting referendum. This absence of a self-executing mechanism leaves essential details to be determined post-approval, a fatal issue reaffirmed time and time again by Illinois courts. Such vagueness and incompleteness would require the Cook County clerk at some later date, at some later date, to determine the procedures for effective implementation of Evanston's RCV system. See the holding in Leck v. Michelson. Let me add a bit of context to that for you all. What happens if two candidates tie? Anybody know? If two candidates tie and they, and get, if it's the lowest, the candidates at the bottom and they get the same amount of votes, what happens? We don't, the referendum doesn't contemplate that. Not even this ordinance doesn't contemplate that. So then that means that the county clerk is going to have to come up with procedures at some later date, which has been reaffirmed time and time again, is not allowed. What if no one receives the majority of the vote? We know that in ranked choice voting, there are a lot of spoiled ballots and ballots that cannot be counted. So if no one receives a majority, what happens? Oh, the county clerk will have to come up with procedures for that later on. How many candidates can a voter rank? As many as they want. Most jurisdictions have a limit of three to five. This referendum and the ordinance doesn't contemplate that. How will the ballot be designed? Ballot design is in Illinois law. How will this ballot be designed? That is one of the most critical pieces of this because ranked choice voting is confusing and difficult, and there is nothing about ballot design in the ordinance in the resolution. So that means the county clerk at some later date is going to have to come up with those procedures in order to implement. What happens if a spoiled ballot, what happens to a spoiled ballot if someone overvotes? They, they vote for the same candidate twice. They really like candidate A, and they vote for them number one and on, number two. What happens to their ballot? What happens with write-in candidates? If someone forgets to rank someone and they go, I ranked this person one, I ranked this person two, I ranked this person four, and they forget to rank somebody three, what happens? We don't know. Do you know what? If you read New York's law, you read San Francisco's law, you read the laws in places that have implemented ranked choice voting, they contemplate those things because it is important. We didn't, and Illinois law says so. Number two, the lack of authorizing statute and potential for voter confusion. As established in Illinois case law, binding referendum must be independently authorized by statute, local ordinance, or provide, or provided for in the Constitution. The ranked choice voting referendum, and I'll wrap up very shortly, the ranked choice voting referendum does not meet these criteria, thereby raising questions about its constitutional validity. The complexity of the RCV process, as vaguely outlined in the referendum, could potentially lead to voter confusion. This aligns with the standards set by Illinois courts, emphasizing the need for clarity to ensure that voters understand what they are approving. Specifically, the referendum appears to contravene specific provisions of the Illinois Constitution and Election Code. See the holding in Harnett v. Evanston Municipal Board. We dealt with this before. Just a few years ago, I served on the local election, municipal officers' election board, and guess what? I voted incorrectly that time. I supported EVI, and I was wrong. It actually was not valid, and I understand why now. And I'll, I'll close here. Given these substantial legal and constitutional issues, I respectfully urge your office, I urge this body, to take a second and figure this out. We're doing it wrong. So I, I move to table this to a, to our, you know, to our first meeting in next month, if you want, but we need to take some time to really evaluate this. We need to get the legal, outside legal opinion that we requested in Rules Committee months ago, because what we are about to walk into is a case where you've had a colleague saying there's a problem here, it's going to be exposed before the next election that there's a problem, and we are going to have massive confusion, and it's going to be undemocratic, and it's because folks are ignoring the Constitution, ignoring state law.
All right. Your time is long expired. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Councilmember Reed moves that this item be tabled to the July 8th meeting. Councilmember Kelly seconds. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Revelle?
Yikes. And we can't discuss this. Okay. Oh, no.
We could've discussed it.
Councilmember Reed?
The, the roll has been called.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Herakaris?
No.
Councilmember Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
No.
Councilmember Nguyen?
No.
Councilmember Newsma?
No.
Councilmember Burns?
No.
Councilmember Suffertin?
With two voting in favor and seven voting against, the motion fails. Councilmember Kelly.
Daniel, could you respond, since I know you're spearheading this, to some of the points that, that Devon made?
No, no one can. Do, do you have any?
I mean, look, his points made about, you know, how does that work in the event that, say, it's not, it's not designated in, in the referendum, in our ranked choice voting description, you know, how many can you order in your votes? Like, is it three, is it five?
Right.
All those things, right, points he raises, can, if you could respond to that, because it is a concern. We're gonna have to sort all that out, and I'm, I'm just not clear on as, how, how that's gonna work going forward, if we're all gonna be coming back here and having votes and discussions on each item that isn't formally addressed. And, thank you.
Yeah, yes. I, I would say that my preference on how to approach this would have been a collaboration with the county clerk's office. I think the councilmember's point is legitimate, that you don't necessarily want all of those decisions to be made ex-post by a purely administrative body, particularly one that's not accountable only to the residents of Evanston. But the idea of leaving the initial referendum high level was to facilitate a collaboration that if, if necessary, would allow us to come back here and pass a series of ordinances saying, hey, we've been working this out with the county clerk's office, and here's what their vendor says is more inexpensive, here is best practice from other states, and so we could have fleshed it out over time. That collaboration has been difficult for a variety of reasons, some related to a, a health tragedy and a, and a passing away. And so now we're in the situation where I would just respectfully say I totally disagree with the characterization. We're running into a potential problem, not because the initial referendum was vague, but because a bunch of time has been frittered away. And in an effort to kind of prompt the kind of now pretty efficient work that would be required to have implementation go smoothly in April, we're, I'm asking us to pass something sensible and sound quickly to hopefully spur that motion on the part of the county clerk's office. Yes, we could have just passed something that spells out every single detail on day one without that collaboration, and then they might have said, hey, listen, this is too prescriptive, you're asking us to do specific things that our vendor doesn't enable, and so we can't do it. Instead, we tried to leave it high level and then allow for the, the kind of working of things out over time, and I have to confess, I'm a little disappointed that that collaboration has not gone in the way that I think would have been best for our community.
Thank you. So I mean, when I hear other cities reference that are doing this and that do cover all those details, so just so I'm clear, we chose not, we very explicitly chose not to include those, which we're gonna have to figure out, those, those points that have to be clarified before we can implement any ranked choice voting. That was a choice to disregard those because we wanted to leave it to the clerk's office to, just so I'm, I wanna make sure I understood.
No.
No.
The, the, the point is not that all of those, and I, I will confess, I don't know the sequence that went from not having ranked choice voting to full implementation. I don't know the order of things. But our point was not, we're not gonna worry about it. Our point wasn't, we don't care. Our point wasn't, let the county clerk figure it out, that's their problem. Our point was, it's 2022, and the election in question is in April of 2025, so let's take this step now to have a binding referendum, to create ranked choice voting, and to allow the fleshing out to occur in a collaborative way. And that hasn't happened, and so because we haven't had the kind of partner I would have hoped for in the clerk's office. And just point of order, because there's a mischaracterization of a statement I made. My point here is that this had to have happened before the referendum, so the voters know. And if you read Leck and Michael, Leck v. Michelson and all the cases I cited, it's very clear it had to happen before. So there's a clear scheme that the voters knew. And please, I implore my colleagues, read this stuff. Councilmember Nguyen, you're a lawyer, read it, and you will see that this had to happen first. And the mayor admitted, we chose not to do that first.
Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanna understand, so what are the, at this point, I mean, I understand this is just sort of rhetorical, I mean, just sort of to reinforce the will of the referendum, this ordinance. So, I mean, where might this go? If, as Councilmember Reed says, this really had to be, we had to have those details ironed out ahead of time, you know, have followed maybe another city's ordinance that did do it correctly, then what hap, I mean, will this be determined? I mean, where are we at in terms of?
I, I guess what I would say is, and, you know, happy we've, how do I say this appropriate? I guess I would say that it is a possibility for us to, either perhaps in the past or the future, to talk about this and, to talk about what, the question of litigation in closed session, that's a closed session, that's an OMA exemption. My recommendation would not be that we pursue litigation, given, given my desire to work collaboratively with the county clerk. That said, I know there are a lot of advocacy groups, a lot of people and organizations across the state who believe deeply in ranked choice voting, who are excited to see us pass it, who are really, really frustrated at the lack of progress toward implementation. And so this gives them another tool in their continued effort to work with and eventually, hopefully, influence the county clerk's office to, to enact it. That, that's what we're doing here. I wanna be very transparent. This is, this is an effort to give folks who are trying to work with the clerk's office to make this happen, as many tools as possible, because all of our constituents, almost two years, a year and a, more than a year and a half ago, said they really wanted it, and we're just trying to, trying to do what we can to make that as likely as possible.
Thank you.
Councilmember Burns.
Yeah, well, I, well, I think Councilmember Reed is, is right on this. I reviewed it. I think he's right. I think history will prove he is correct on this. The reality is that, the bottom line is, is once that review happens, either by the clerk or some court, if this goes to court, the question is, will, will the law allow for the type of collaboration that Mayor Biss just described? Period. I don't think anybody up here, except for maybe Councilmember Reed, feels comfortable making that call, but eventually that's what it'll come down to. A judge will determine whether or not that level of collaboration is appropriate and is lawful, which is why I'll support this, because it doesn't really do anything other than send another notice to the clerk to say, hey, we want you to do it, but we're still waiting on them to respond, to tell us, you know, what is their official position on it. What has also made this, I'm sure, confusing, perhaps to Mayor Biss and also Council Rugby, is the, the issue that, that Councilmember Reed is bringing up was not brought up by the clerk. In fact, what the clerk brought up, you know, the, what the clerk brought up to object to this, Councilmember Reed, which I'm sure he can go on to in different detail, he actually disagrees with, with their objection. He doesn't believe that is based in law in the way that, that his, his position is. And so I think that's what's made things confusing, is, is that we haven't, the Cook County clerk has not objected to the ranked choice voting in Evanston in the same, you know, with the same argument that Councilmember Reed has provided tonight and previously. So that further confuses things. So this, this, all this does is, is sends a little notice, a little nudge to the county clerk to say, hey, you know, what are you gonna do here? Make a decision. Ultimately, unless I'm misunderstanding something, we cannot, we can't circumvent the Cook County clerk. I think that much is clear. So if they don't wanna do this, they're not gonna do it. So there's, and that's why I say, there's really nothing, it's not like we're forcing this on the Cook County clerk. Ultimately, it will be their decision, you know, to effectuate this or not, and I think they will make that decision shortly. Councilmember Reed said he's gonna, you know, send the letter to, to, to the new administration once, once that individual is seated, and we'll, we'll, we'll see what they say. But I, I, I do think anything to nudge, you know, the, the county clerk to make a decision on it quickly would help all of us, no matter how you feel about this issue.
Councilmember Revelle.
I saw that, the time is getting really short, because, I mean, that, our 2025 election is just around the corner. Have we, and so Councilmember Reed listed a whole host of sticking points that need to get addressed. So have we given any thought to how, what, I mean, presumably, if, if and when we had some kind of session with the Cook County clerk, we would say, here are, here are how we think these various issues should be addressed. I mean, or do we just say, what, what do you think? I mean, who, whose, whose job is it to?
Let me just speak to that. And I, I'm a little kinda halting in my speech patterns, because I, I really want to stress that whatever would have happened in an alternate universe, like, somebody who we all really look up to got sick and died in the middle of this, and I, I do believe to my core that that had an effect on the timeline. So what I'm about to say is, is not, I think if, without that context, what I'm about to say would come off a little bit more partially critical than it is meant. But the clerk and I had a meeting with senior staff from the county clerk's office, I forget, but certainly well before the new year, to discuss these very questions. And one of the takeaways was gonna be them going to their vendor, Dominion, which implements ranked choice voting in other jurisdictions, to kind of get a menu of options so that we could consider those things and make an informed choice, and that never happened. So I agree with your concern. I, I'll just, I mean, again, maybe I'm saying too much here, I'm pretty skeptical, given the fact that we're having this conversation in late June, and given when petitions circulation begins. But even notwithstanding that skepticism, my choices are, and all of our choices, are give up entirely or at least make a good faith effort, and I believe that a yes vote on this now is the best good faith effort that we can make. And sorry for the long answer, but Councilmember Revelle, you have the floor.
At this time, the only person requesting to speak is Councilmember Reed. Your time is way over time. But so if you're, if you're willing to, it'd be very, very quick.
It'll be very, very quick. And I wanted to make the point that you just made there, that petition starts in late August. If we truly believe we did this right, and 80-something percent of our voters lawfully voted to implement ranked choice voting, why the hell would we not file a lawsuit for injunctive relief to force the county clerk's office to properly implement a law that 80-some-odd percent of our voters voted for? The only reason we wouldn't do that is because we know damn well we did it wrong. So we need to do this right, and if we do believe we did it right, we need to file an, for injunctive relief now, so that in August, when folks start circulating petitions, or maybe September, depending on what happens with the implementation here, that we can have a proper election and not go through what we went through in 2016, where then we have lawsuits being filed against candidates because they may or may not have filed in the right time period, or may have, may not have started circulating petitions too early or too late. So, thank you.
At this time, no one is asking to speak for a first time, so we go back to Councilmember Kelly with three minutes and 45 seconds left.
So just, in the event, it sounds like there's a good possibility that there are errors and this wouldn't go through. If we wanted to place something, a, a modified version, that could, would definitely, you know, hold water legally for the next elections, when would we have to submit that?
The, our, so I just wanna, I, I just wanna, I don't wanna sort of poke, I don't wanna revisit, I, I don't, I don't accept the characterization that things are, were probably done incorrectly. It's a difference of opinion. I respect everyone's right to an opinion, but I just don't, I don't agree with that. If, if you're, if you're asking about what it would take to pass a referendum in time to have this effective in the 2025 election, the answer is that ship has long sailed. If you're saying, suppose it doesn't happen in 2025, and we've gotta, we kind of have to start from scratch, then we have a lot of time, but I would say we should use that time wisely, given the experience that we've had this time.
Thank you. So, but for November? So, but for November, when can this body submit?
Seventy-some-odd days before the election is the deadline. I think it's seventy-three, seventy-six.
So if we wanted to put it on the November ballot, we still could. That would not, I don't think anybody would argue that that would be adequate to implement it in April.
Right. I just wanted to know when we would have to submit. So seventy days before?
Right. So there's some time, but not a ton of time even for that.
Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Hara Gharis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries. Sorry, and with eight voting in favor and one voting against. I'm sorry, I was counting hell knows by accident. With eight voting in favor and one voting against, the motion carries and the ordinance is passed. This brings us now to the consent agenda. I already have a kind of a long list, so bear with me a sec. Item A2 was referred to the Preservation Commission. Item A12 needs to be pulled, just so that an amendment can be described. Item HS1 was already passed, and items HCDC1 and 2 need to be pulled. Are there other items besides those five folks would like to see pulled?
Item A4, please.
A4?
A14.
A14? So so far, I have A2, A4, A12, A14, HS1, HCDC1, and HCDC2. Anything else? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move the consent agenda minus the items that were just listed.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves the passage of the consent agenda with the exception of the following items: A2, A4, A12, A14, HS1, HCDC1, HCDC2. Councilmember Harris seconds. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hara Gharis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye. With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the consent agenda with the seven exceptions just enumerated is passed. Councilmember Kelly, do you have a motion on item A4?
I do. I'd like to move item A4, approval of contract award with Capital Cement Company for the 2024 Allianz Sidewalk Improvements.
Second.
Councilmember Kelly moves approval of this contract award. Councilmember Harris seconds. Councilmember Sufferton?
Yes, I'd like to make an amendment to remove item number nine, which is a sidewalk gap infill on McDaniel between Golf and Simpson Street. I've sent an email with that in writing as well, and I, I know that everyone on council received an email from the residents of that block.
I'll second.
Councilmember Sufferton moves to amend item A4 to remove item nine, the sidewalk gap infill from Golf to Simpson along McDaniel. Councilmember Kelly seconds. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hara Gharis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
No.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and one voting against, the motion carries and the item is removed. Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll on the amended approval A4?
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hara Gharis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye. With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the contract as amended is approved. Sorry. Councilmember Kelly, do you have a motion on item A12?
I'd like to, I'd like to move item A12, Resolution 38-R-24, authorizing the settlement and release of all claims in City of Evanston versus Copenhagen Construction.
Councilmember Kelly moves passes Resolution 38-R-24. Councilmember Nguyen seconds. Councilmember Kelly, I know that we pulled this because it was amended. Can you just explain to the council in public?
Sure. So I amended it, which was approved in APW, to include Burke is also part of the settlement. So the exact amounts are Copenhagen's contributing 475 and Burke 325. So for transparency, I wanted to be sure that both parties are included here. I'd also like to ask, separate from that, well, anyway, I guess we can go ahead and vote. I had one, I would like to get, if we could get like a full accounting for the public of what transpired, not now, but going forward. I don't know if that has to be a motion, but I, it would be nice to, I know every, this was a very expensive and big project, and everyone's been talking about it for a while, and there's very little information about it in this. Do I have to make a motion for that to get some sort of a, something at our next APW meeting, a full sort of accounting of what transpired and what went wrong and for the public? It would certainly save me a lot of time in explaining to residents, and I think for a lot of people, because we all get asked often, is that?
My own advice would be, I don't think it requires a motion. I mean, it's convenient, you're the chair of the committee, you could place something on the agenda and do discussion with staff about what the agenda looks like.
Good enough.
Would the clerk please take the roll on the resolution which was amended as just described earlier this evening?
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hara Gharis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and Resolution 38-R-24, which again was amended slightly earlier this evening, is passed. Now on item A14, Councilmember Kelly?
I'd like to move item A14, Ordinance 56024, amending City Code Section 10-11-18, residents parking only districts.
Councilmember Revel? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember, I apologize. Councilmember Kelly moves introduction, Ordinance 56-0-24. Councilmember Harris seconds. Councilmember Revel?
Yes, this ordinance deals with parking District 6, which is basically the large neighborhoods around the Ryan Field. And we've been adding, through various postcard surveys, adding various blocks to District 6, with an eye to eventually coming to council with a special event parking proposal. So residents living within District 6 would be, we would have resident-only parking for these concerts and things at Ryan Field. So this, so there's, there's a block that I'd like to add, that currently where someone is building a house but doesn't, doesn't live there yet, but he very much wants to be part of District 6, that would be to add Wesley, Wesley Avenue. There's a teeny tiny bit of Wesley Avenue that goes south from Lincoln. And then to add two blocks where there's no parking on the south side of the street, but they would be part of, this, part of District 6. So the, it would, it would amend page, the chart on page 283 of your packet, it would add the south side, one block on the south side of Colfax, one block on the south side of Lincoln, and it would add Wesley Avenue. So I move, and I just sent that amendment in an email. So I, I moved to amend Ordinance 56-0-24 to add those blocks.
Councilmember Revel moves introduc-, no, sorry, gosh. Go with the program, Daniel. Councilmember Revel moves to amend Ordinance 56-0-24 as just described, changing, swapping some street names and adding a few descriptions, as has been both described very clearly verbally and sent by email. Councilmember Harris seconds. If there's no discussion on the motion with the clerk, on the amendment, would the clerk please take the roll on the amendment to the ordinance?
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hara Gharis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns is not in the room. Councilmember Sufferton?
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and Ordinance 56-0-24 is amended. Councilmember Revel, you still have the floor if you want it. Would the clerk then please take the roll on the amended ordinance?
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hara Gharis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns is not in the room. Councilmember Sufferton?
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and Ordinance 56-0-24 as, as just amended, is introduced. This brings us now to item, items HCDC1 and 2. Councilmember Revel?
Sure. So this first item, it's a little bit complicated. So at the December meeting of the Housing and Community Development Committee, the committee officially closed the public comment period for the draft 2024 action plan that provided how we were going to spend the 2024 federal CDBG home and ESG grant funds. And so this draft action plan was based on an estimate of what we were going to receive from the federal government and what we, you know, based on recent history. But when we, in, in May, when we got the actual amounts told to us about what we were going to receive for those three funding, those three funds, we learned that we were not getting any ESG funds at all. ESG is Emergency Solutions Grant. So this meant we had to make a substantial change to the action plan, which triggered the requirement for another public hearing period of 30 days. And so that comment period opened on May 24th, and it's ready to be closed this evening, following the mayor's invitation for public comment.
Thank you for that explanation. I agree it's complicated, but that was also extremely clear. Is there any member of the public who seeks to give comment on the amended FY 2024 Housing and Urban Development Action Plan? Councilmember Kelly?
So where's this noticed? I mean, I, was it put out anywhere else besides in, in a newspaper somewhere?
I turned to, can we ask?
I mean, do we just follow the letter of the law, or do we follow the spirit of the law by really putting out solicitation of comments?
We have a group of people, excuse me, who have been shown interest in hearing about our HUD plans, and they get an email. But it is something that we're required to do a public, you know, do a notice, but we also communicate through that channel, because that's really how you get to more people who are actually more likely to comment. It is very uncommon to get much public comment. Betty Esther did provide public comment earlier, so we did get public comment. And there have been many years when we've had none.
So the notices, where is the notice?
It has to be run in a newspaper of general circulation. That's one of the requirements of HUD.
So it's in the TRIB, or where does it?
We use the Evanston Review.
Okay. But, I mean, we don't ever just put out a notice on like the city website, besides a select group of people?
Well, we do. We put it in the, in the city e-news and things like that as well.
The public period? Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you for that. Seeing no further comment, is there a motion to close the public comment period?
I move to close the public comment period on the 2024 action plan.
Councilmember Revel moves to close the public comment period on the FY 24 HUD action plan. Councilmember Nguyen seconds. Seeing no discussion with the clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hara Gharis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns is not in the room. Councilmember Sufferton?
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the public comment period on the FY 24 HUD action plan is closed. Councilmember Revel on item HCDC2?
Sure. So following the announcement of the actual grant amounts we were going to receive from the federal government, at the June 13th meeting of the Housing and Community Development Committee, we approved an updated 2024 action plan to recommend to city council that reflects the actual grant amounts to be received. And the program and activities to be funded by the grants are shown on page 360 of your packet. And so I move approval of the final 2024 action plan incorporating the actual grant amounts from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, you know, as spelled out on, in the packet.
Second. So Councilmember Revel moves approval to recommend the final FY 2024 action plan incorporating 2024 entitlement grants. Councilmember Nguyen seconds. Councilmember Nusma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question for Director Flax. Do we have any, is there any indication why we did not get any ESG money this year? And how much has it been in previous years?
Yes, there is. We fell below the threshold to be a formula grantee. And I think it's 145,000, if you fall below that. We have been an ESG recipient since they, the founding of ESG, but this has also happened to Oak Park. They have gone in and out of getting ESG. We have worked with the Alliance to End Homelessness in suburban Cook County, the Continuum of Care, which also receives, you know, they get money through the McKinney-Vento Act, which this comes through, and they are also working with us to work with the state, because our money then reverts to the state of Illinois. And the state of Illinois is actually going to fund two of our recipients that have historically been funded with ESG, and that is Connections for the Homeless and the YWCA for their homeless shelters. The state does not use their money for prevention and rapid rehousing quite the same way we do, so they will not, we will not, that money won't be coming quite the same way to Evanston. We will still get access to it because Cook County and other organizations that get ESG put money into those activities. And also, our money is generally spent on a two-year cycle. We don't actually allocate our money till we get our grants, because then there's this really quick requirement that you have to allocate it to sub recipients and then start spending it. It's got a two-year spend. So we generally are only about a third to halfway through the prior year. So we will at least have those resources for this year, and in 2025, we'll have to look for others.
So how much ESG did we get last year?
It was right about 100.
Okay, about nothing?
It was, right around 150. So it's very, it's-
Is there anything we can do differently that would help our chances to get ESG next year?
If we could affect the formula, which we can't. I mean, it's based on, on American community survey data and things like that, a great deal of it. And the other thing that happens is, even if we don't necessarily, our population doesn't change and our status doesn't, there may be other communities that get much higher scoring. And so it's, that's one of the problems with the formula, is you, you can have this exact same amount of money allocated by counts, by Congress, but our formula can still change. So there's really nothing we can do directly. I mean, one could argue that maybe we've made progress and that means we didn't have as many homeless people. We know that that really isn't what's happening, though, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hara Gharis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Burns is out of the room. Councilmember Sufferton?
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the action plan is approved. This brings us to call of the wards. Councilmember Revel?
No report.
Councilmember Reed?
I have a ward meeting this, or yeah, this Thursday at 6:30 at Robert Crown. We will have folks from Elevate there who will talk about a, the funding that the city provided to help folks green their homes. And so this program will allow homeowners and property owners to rent, to rent affordable housing, to have, in some cases, 100% subsidy of modernizing and greening their homes by installing electric furnaces and heaters and the whole nine yards. So really excited for that. And I believe the only areas eligible are in the eighth ward and in the fifth ward and a small part of the second ward. So I think they'll be making the rounds to let folks in those areas know. We'll also have a number of other folks. I invite folks out to the ward meeting. Eighth warders receive the newsletter. If you don't get the newsletter and you're in the eighth ward or you're anywhere in the city, I would recommend you sign up for it. And then I'll just close and say, I really, really want someone here to just read the cases that I've cited. And, because it's just so disappointing that we have a body full of folks who aren't asking questions, who are ignoring, and it's, I don't know, it feels like it's legislative civil disobedience or something. I don't know what's going on here, but it's, it's, it's quite scary, honestly. And I encourage folks to, to not set us up for confusion like we had in 2016, and essentially setting us up for what will be extremely undemocratic when folks are potentially kicked off the ballot, unable to run because of mistakes that we made here and we just ignored. Thank you.
Councilmember Herakaris?
I'd like to thank Parks and Rec staff for hosting a great community open house at the South End Community Center. I heard back that over 850 people attended. It was really great turnout. Folks are really excited. I'm hoping to have the next ninth ward meeting there on Wednesday, July 17, if everything works out okay. And there'll be more information about guests and the timing. And I'm hoping to run it hybrid. So that news will come out in the next newsletter soon.
Councilmember Kelly?
No report.
Councilmember Harris?
Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone who participated in Juneteenth. That was an amazing day. Had a good time. Then Sunday, we participated in the Race Against Hate, and the mayor provided a proclamation. It's our 25th anniversary of hosting this event. Bunch of other events, but second ward meeting, 6:30 this Thursday at Robert Crown. I look forward to seeing second ward residents. Thank you.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes, my next office hours will not be on July 4, but they will be on Thursday, July 18, from 7:30 to 9:30 on, at Brothers Cave.
Councilmember Nusma?
Fourth ward office hours will be a week from tomorrow, Tuesday, July 2, 7:00 p.m. at Robert Crown and online.
Councilmember Sufferton? Uh, Councilmember Nusma?
Oh, give me a second here. I had it right here. Okay. Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, 120/2, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding litigation and minutes review. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are five ILCS 120/2, see sections 11 and 21.
Councilmember Nusma moves that the council convene into an executive session to discuss the aforementioned items. Councilmember Harris seconds. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen? Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries. And at 9:15, 9:00 p.m., the council moves into an executive session to begin immediately in the council member library.